All right, welcome everyone. Good mic check on that. Welcome to today's regular city council meeting, February 27, 2018. And for the record, we do have a quorum. All council members are present. We'll call the meeting to order. And if we can all take a moment and start out our meeting with a moment of silence. Thank you. With that, next up, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. And I was going to invite Tim Callen, our Business of the Year up, if he can lead us in the pledge. There's two mics, Tim. There's one right up here at the podium, and we'll follow after you, and I'll join in.
Hello. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, omnipotent, and just as for all.
Next up on our agenda, we don't have any recognitions tonight. Close session report, we have none for report out. And next for on our agenda, Mayor, Council Members' Reports and Announcements. And I was going to start out with a couple. The first one, we gave a brief clarification on this last, what was it, two weeks ago, Scott? City Manager and I attended a PURS meeting in solving, and was just going to look to Scott to give us a little update on that for our viewing public and council on that.
Scott Collins, City Manager, thank you, Mayor and Council. Yeah, so the Slow County and Santa Barbara County cities are represented at the discussion with CalPERS League of Cities, the chief lobbyist who's working on behalf of all of us on the CalPERS issue. To really summarize at the high level, all 400-plus cities that are in the CalPERS system are feeling the pain of the, or anticipated pain coming with the increase in CalPERS payments. This is as a result of the reduction in the discount rate from a 7.5% to 7% to align with kind of the realities of the market and how the CalPERS fund has kind of behaved over the last several years. It's starting to make a return on investment, which is great. But we have an extreme number of liabilities that need to be funded over the next 30 years to account for market losses after the Great Recession, and also to account for the extension of benefits that were granted in late 90s, early 2000s. So some cities are going to see insolvency as a result of these pension increases, while others maybe weather better. And Morro Bay has positioned itself well with the 10-year forecast to be prepared for the coming increases that will go increased by about $1.6 million over the next five to six years. What the discussion came back with is that all cities are looking creatively to address this, and we're also seeking relief at the state level and within the courts to kind of claw back some of the benefits and seek other structural reforms that, at this point, we aren't able to do at the local level. So we're continuing to update council and the community on the CalPERS front, and in the meantime, look to bring forward structurally balanced budgets that address those issues in the immediate.
Okay. Thanks for that update, Scott. And the meeting itself was held in the council chambers for the city of solving. Other city managers, there were some, there was a combination of city managers and mayors in attendance, but not always, and there were other city staff. As Scott laid out, Santa Barbara, San Luis, and Spoke County, so it's quite beneficial. Thanks, thanks for the update. One other announcement for me on considering the school shooting in Parkfield, Florida, there's been, the news is continuing to cover that. There's been quite a bit of concern in the community and city on that. I just wanted to talk a little bit about that, and perhaps other council members might want to weigh in on that as well. For myself, I visited the principal of the high school, had conversations with our police chief, the sheriff, and about active shooter preparedness and training. I asked if the sheriff is, will be conducting a training for active shooters, and I asked the sheriff if he would send out invitations to councils to attend and observe, to learn about what that's about. I also asked, reached out to Mayor Martin of Pass Robles, and asked if he could put an item on the mayor's meeting agenda next month to invite the sheriff and other law enforcement folks, and perhaps our school administrator, if we can coordinate that, to have a discussion about how we're prepared in any of their conversations with that. So those are some of the things that have been going on. And as another note for council and the community, on March 14th is a nationwide school walkout at 10:00 a.m. Our Morro Bay High School students will be doing that, and I would, I was going to attend, and I would invite council members to attend that as well, to show support for our students. And I know Red has got some comments on that, and I was going to look to the chief to follow up on any comments that he might have on that as well. I'll just look for any follow-up comments with the chief at this time, if you have any comments. Chief Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. Just as an overview, the Morro Bay Police Department continues to train and prepare in conjunction with our other law enforcement agencies. And we have a long-established training protocol and relationship with both our high school and our elementary school. I too have been in contact with both our school principals at those locations. We've discussed this, and we have an ongoing conversation. We'll have two trainings actually coming up. One sometime in June, which I would like to extend the invitation to our city council and other community members to attend as observers. That June training will be held at Cuesta College, and we'll get you the date on that. There's also a specific training in August at Morro Bay High School in conjunction with the faculty. So we'll continue to work with our schools and other members of our community. I might point out that we also have met recently with our clergy here in Morro Bay, unfortunately in the aftermath of a church shooting that we had some months ago. So we continue to do outreach and be proactive in our training and our preparation to keep the city safe.
Okay, great, thanks. Thanks for that, chief. And with that, I'll turn it to Red for announcements, and then come back through Matt, John, and Marlis. Red?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, for being proactive on this. I too have had some conversations with Scott about school safety, and the chief is, in his perennial way, has also taken the lead and jumped out and talked to people. We want everyone in our community to know that school safety is of vital importance to the entire city of Morro Bay. The primary responsibility for school safety lies with the schools, but everybody in this community is an active partner in keeping our children safe. And I am, I'm just really happy that our chief is so proactive in taking this on. Thank you very much for that. On a happier note, we have Dixon's Annual Spaghetti Dinner fundraiser coming up, March the 9th, from 5:00 to 7:30 at the Morro Bay Community Center. This is an important activity that supports the children of Morro Bay to help pay their fees for participating in recreation activities. So in addition to supporting a great cause, if you go to this dinner, you're going to get great food, and you're going to meet all your friends, because everybody in Morro Bay is going to be there. In addition to the dinner, there will be beer and wine available, and a sundae bar. The cost is $12 for adults, and for children under 12, it is $7. So I encourage you to attend this. It's a, it's a great fundraiser for our kids and the recreation department. And I will do office hours this coming Saturday at Sun 'n Buns from 9:00 until 10:00. It's March 3rd, 9 to 10, Sun 'n Buns. So that's all I have.
All right, Red, Matt?
Yes, one thing I'd like to put on last here is big, great job, thank you, to the Estero Bay Surf Club. They put on their, and Tim Callen is out in the audience there, and he's one of the ones responsible. I'd like to put him and Tim Kennedy on, put their names out there. There was over 200 surfers came from all over California to participate in this event. And on one hand, people will say, well, big deal, it's just a surf contest, but it was an absolutely incredible event in terms of Morro Bay, our T-Bid, our tourism, looking at these shoulder season events. This was as big or very close to being like our kite festival. And in the off-season like this, having that many people come to town for the, sharing the ambiance of Morro Bay. And I was there for both days, just to see the community, the sense of family, from the smallest members to older folks, and just the enjoyment of our town, and then how that carried over into our restaurants, our hotels, gas, et cetera, et cetera. It was a very significant, significant event, so I want to thank that Estero Bay Surf Club. And that's about it.
All right, good job, Matt, thanks. John?
Thank you. Thank you, Red, for mentioning the Dixon Dinner that was on my list as well. I'll just add that at that dinner, there's going to be a wine walk and auction door prizes, two things that I had down on my list as well. So I just want to reaffirm, a great program, supporting our youth, be there, and it's a fun time and great food. So I will have a council member open house, open forum, if you will, on February, excuse me, January, no, wait, what is this? We've been off a week?
We're, we're.
I went on vacation last week, and you see what happens when you go on vacation. On March 21st, March 21st, at 6:00 p.m. at the Community Center, 6 o'clock, and that's a time where there's no agenda. I usually just present one concept, and that concept will be the financial status of the city, and my thoughts about that, and then open it up to you. Invite all of the community, bring your friends, 6:00 to 7:30, March 21st, at the Community Center. So wanted to make you aware of that. And Mayor, thank you for mentioning and being, again, I'm going to echo the comments of Red and Councilman McCoeweski, being proactive with regard to our kids. My heart goes out to the folks in Florida, and, you know, this issue is an issue I don't think is going away, unfortunately. And in addition to awareness by school officials, you know, parents, grandparents, your awareness is extremely important in these trainings that you have, the opportunities to come and learn how to possibly help mitigate some of these tragedies are extremely important. So I encourage you to attend those as they come available. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Marlis?
Yes, I would just like to update everyone on an event that took place here at the Vets' Hall yesterday afternoon from 1:00 to 4:00. It was the second one that has occurred here in Morro Bay, and it's called MASH, M-A-S-H, which is Mobile Services for the Homeless. And it was an incredible event. Over 300 people came through the Vets' Hall yesterday, and there were 20 various social service agencies here to help folks. Our community participated, and I wanted to thank everybody who organized it. It was organized by county social services. They managed to sign up 55 people as, in the event, and it, it really helped some of the most vulnerable people in our community. So thanks to everybody who participated in it, and that's what I have.
Thanks, Marlis. Thanks for that. Any other staff announcements, as I look to Scott? Any other, so Chief Knuckles, anything on fire updates or anything like that?
Mr. Mayor, thank you so much. Yes, our community has suffered three structure fires in residential since January 14th. We had three losses. One of the homes, though, it can be rebuilt, and that was on Orchis Avenue. We've had two fires on Orchis Street, and then one fire on Vashon just this past weekend. My thoughts is first, great incident action plans by the first incoming crews. They made some great decisions and great actions to not only try to save the structures that were destroyed, but the exposures, the homes. As you know, on that side of town, sometimes a setback is only three feet, and so we have homes right on top of homes, and they did a great job with that. Also, a great thought that I'm thinking about is the great mutual aid program that we have in the North Coast. And I also want to thank Chief Olson. He gave me an engine over the weekend for the fire that we had on Vashon Street. Just this last weekend, we had six engines and one ladder truck on one fire, and that's just remarkable, the mutual aid and auto aid programs that we have in our county. And then also how beneficial the Red Cross has been. We've had at least one resident on the fire on January 14th. We had three residents on the second Orchis fire on February 17th, and then we had three folks from this weekend that were all helped out by Red Cross, and they respond right to our city and go right to the occupant and help them out with their immediate, and hopefully their short-term plans to get them going, at least get food, clothing, and housing. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. With that, we'll conclude our announcements, presentations. We have none on the agenda for tonight, and moving on to public comment, I do have public comment speaker slips. We do start off our public comment with a business spot, and we are proud to announce that we have our Pledge of Allegiance leader, Tim Callen, for Business of the Year, Pizza Port, to come up and do an introduction of his business and start us off with a public comment. Welcome, Tim.
Thank you very much, Mayor and council members. It's always an honor to talk to you guys. And Matt, thank you for that shout-out for "The Ugly." That was awesome and quite a community event. My name's Tim Callen, longtime resident of, over 40 years of Morro Bay, and part of this awesome community, and proud to be a part of it. Owner of Pizza Port Restaurant here in town, that's been a part of our community for 35 years now, since 1983. I'm the third owner, and it's been a family business for quite some time, and has, since we've owned it, definitely. Pizza Port, if you don't know where it's at, 787 Main Street, Morro Bay. And we've been in the community serving pizzas and salads and sandwiches for a long time, and working hard to do it, and employing a lot of hard-working young kids as their first jobs, and it's just an, actually an honor to be a part of the community in that way. We have fresh produce and vegetables and fresh dough every day, and if you haven't been there, we have a lot of room for community events. We support a lot of sports teams and a lot of other types of events in the restaurant itself. And then we also have a deck area, as well as an outside area with a yard and a fence, and it's dog and kid friendly. So just really kind of a community, family-friendly place. So it's, it's, I just want to tell you a little bit about it, and I thank you for the opportunity to do so. Appreciate it.
Tim, thanks very much.
You bet.
Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to public comment. First up is Ken Green, and then following that, Ken Vesterveld.
Mr. Mayor, council members, staff members, I'm Ken Green, Morro Bay resident. I have three short thank-yous and a moderately long request. The thank-you number one goes to the Fire Department. You've been very busy these last few months, and your fast responses to our recent fires and your help during the Motecita disaster really deserve a shout-out, so hats off to Chief Knuckles and his crew. Thank-you number two goes to the Police Department, always ready with rapid response and patient vigilance at all times, it seems. Especially a shout-out to Chief Allen, who is friendly but takes no grief. Thank you to the staff, and particularly Jennifer Callaway, for posting the financial reports on the city website, and for the extensive quarterly report in today's agenda. Okay, my request regarding Planning Objective 1, Goal 2, Part C on updating the aquarium site. Please do not plan for an aquarium. We do not need one. There are excellent aquaria that already exist, one up in Monterey, one down in Long Beach. I'm familiar with the one in Long Beach, having lived down in that area. Both are very expensive, both require donations from the public, a lot of support. Morro Bay, even in partnership with neighboring cities, if that's part of the plan, is not up to the required responsibilities, especially financial. And when you're talking about financial responsibilities, planning for an aquarium against a background of planning for the water reclamation facility, and the mandatory increases in the CalPERS contributions, really puts too much of a strain on things. So please take the aquarium off the agenda. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Next up, Ken Vesterveld. Come on up, Ken, and then Aaron Oaks.
Good evening, council. Ken Vesterveld, resident of Morro Bay. Mayor Irons, that jacket's going to come in pretty handy in 18 days, or 19 days, so. What I would like to talk to you tonight is about our Police Department. I'm sure that if I ask every one of you, do you have respect for the Police Department? 100% would be yes. But what the average citizen doesn't know is that, as far as I know, I've been around for 16 years, is that we're either last or second-last in pay scale. Have been. Always tough negotiations, and I hope you take a look at that. The second is, we're understaffed. Do not have enough people. This summer, I believe we escaped some serious thoughts. Most of the time, on the weekends, in this town, on the weekends can be 20,000, maybe up to 30,000. You have two officers on. This one particular day, officer had to take a prisoner to the hospital to get clearance. Was gone five hours. We had another incident where our gentleman was inebriated. It took two people to put him into the cruiser. Not that he was belligerent, but he couldn't stand up. That meant if there was a car accident, if there was a fight, if there was spousal abuse, nobody could respond. You'd have to call the sheriffs. We are understaffed. It's going to be a matter of time. That there's going to be some trouble with lawsuits. You're going to see more and more where officers have to leave because of medical clearance before they can take them to the jail. We've already seen an increase with that because of what has taken place at the jail. So we should consider that. The other thing is, in our strategic planning, there hasn't been one sentence that I'm aware of about plans for a future police station. I know it's not going to happen overnight, but we've got to start saving for that somehow, even if it takes 10 years. We need that. And so I'm hoping you can hear some discussion on that. And so, on a good note, Car Show's coming up, April, excuse me, May 2nd, 3rd, 4th, 5th, and 6th. We're going to be looking for people who can donate for trophies. Red, thank you very much for last year for doing that, so appreciate it. And I hope my comments are respectful about what's taking place with our Police Department. So I'm hoping to get the citizens aware of all these issues. Thank you very kindly, and have a good meeting.
Thanks, Ken. Aaron Oaks, and then Pam Oaks.
Good evening, members of the council and staff. My name is Aaron Oaks. I'm a Morro Bay resident, and I'm speaking solely as a resident, not as a writer or columnist. I just wanted to thank Mr. Vesterveld for his heartfelt and thoughtful comments about the Police Department. I believe that the Police Department has been understaffed for a long time, and I'm really grateful to Mr. Vesterveld for bringing these facts, these very important facts, to light. But tonight, I'm going to be talking a little bit about the wastewater project. I'm going to respond in part to a letter to the editor that Councilwoman McPherson left in the Bay News in this most recent issue. I feel that there's been a lot of discussion about how much the project costs, how much it doesn't cost. Councilwoman McPherson was talking about how the plan is at $167 million, but she doesn't know for sure what it's going to be. It's been reduced as a result of the Facility Master Plan. There's a lot of questions about that. But I think it's important to note that it's a little misleading to correct residents on that, when not even the consultants or our Public Works Director knows 100% for sure how much it's going to cost. I can say that the majority of residents in Morro Bay want the plant upgraded, but not at any cost. I mean, there's a part of the population that is concerned about the cost with regards to the treatment plant and the water reclamation component, and I think that we really need to have a discussion, and really need to talk about the ramifications for these rising costs, more realistically. And one of the things, I'm going to just bring some, that's relatively new news, to the forefront. Now we're down to only two companies for the RFP process. So the two people that, the two businesses that are, that are still in the game are AECOM, WM Lyles, and Phalong Black and Veatch. Having two companies bidding on a large-scale infrastructure project is not very competitive. I mean, you're not going to get the lowest, lowest possible cost if you only have two people and two applicants. I happened to speak to a couple of representatives from those companies who dropped or were interested in the RFQ process but decided not to come forward. They were concerned about Black and Veatch for being in this process. Why? It's because they've already held, put together the Facility Master Plan, which is $800,000, and now they're bidding in the RFP process. And now they're only one of two bidders? I'm a little concerned about that. So I'm just going to wrap up my comments on that. Please take a look at those at the bidding process, possibly restart that. Thank you.
Thanks, Aaron. Pam? Pam Oaks, and then next will be Mark Hanson.
Good evening, Pam Oaks, with "Save Our Seniors" in Morro Bay. At the last meeting, I used the figure of $167 million for the cost of the wastewater project. Mr. Heding acted like I made the figure up, but in reality, got it from your consultant, the Bay News and the Tribune. He had Mr. Livick correct me, and said it was now estimated at $150 million. Where did the $167 million come from to begin with? So when it goes down to $150 million, it's supposed to look like we're getting a deal? When your consultant throws out a figure of $167 million, what do you think the bids will come in at? I mean, after Mayor Irons originally said it would be $20 million to move the plan, you know? What happened? It's a big difference, $130 million. It's a big difference, $130 million. With the millions spent so far on your consultants, who we probably made a millionaire off our backs for nothing, for the demolition of the plant, to buy the Cayucas' share of the land, lift station, change orders, EIR, interest on the loan, the figure of $167 million is probably more the reality. What's the big hurry to get everybody out of Morro Bay? Mr. Heding used the excuse of a grant to rush going out to bid before an EIR, but wasn't very honest when he didn't mention that we were only one out of 12 up for the grant. The more you spend, the more people forced out of town. I guess that's fine if you stand to profit, but horrible for the rest of us. Are you forcing people out to make way for the wealthy? Have you thought of where the people can go? They can't afford over 300 a month, and that bill isn't a one-time thing. It's every month, year after year, for decades, then passed on to the kids. There are solutions you could have considered. In fact, I did speak with the Coastal Commission last week, and they said it was difficult, but not impossible, to upgrade our existing plan. Everything's difficult, so I mean, that shouldn't, I mean, if that's what it was. But there are two other projects that would be about 50 million. Why would you only want the most expensive, especially when the state water board wants the most cost-effective project for their loans? Or are we just too friendly with Black and Beach? Almost done. Mayor Irons, do you remember when you told me the people would decide about the project? And at this point, I'm quite sure that people will say, "Go back to the drawing board." They don't want the mega sewer and the hardship it will cost everyone. Okay, especially when there's only two bidders. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Mark Hanson and then Jeff Echols.
Mark Hanson of Morro Bay. Apparently, at least one of you had an issue with an article I had published in the Bay News. Doesn't surprise me because it's not unusual for politicians to have problems with the truth, but so I'm not surprised. If I may, I'd like to ask, since there's people here, just a show of hands, how many?
Pardon me. During public comment, sorry to interrupt, Mark, but if we address the council, and this isn't a forum to rally folks, it's public comment for you and to address the council. And it's right here in our guidelines, right here.
It was for your benefit.
I'm not making this up.
Okay, it was for your benefit, I think, but that's okay. Anyway, as you know, I have an issue with $167 million sewer, $150 million sewer, because I don't think anybody behind me is in, and I know what I've talked to is in favor of paying for $167 million sewer built out of town when the one we have is working or will work with a $20 million upgrade. And interesting, chief, I'm not a parent, so I don't have any children, but I'm, like everyone, I'm concerned about school shootings. But it's not just schools that are unsafe. It's county offices, it's concerts, it's nightclubs, churches, post offices, strip malls, they've all, beauty salons, they've all had shootings. But what concerns me is I have more of a fear of the five of you than of somebody with an AR-15 or an AK-47, because the chances of me being shot by an AK-47 or an AR-15 are pretty slim to none. But the chances of me being harmed by the five of you are almost 100%, because you want to force me to pay for $167 million sewer that we don't need and I, as a person on a fixed income, cannot afford. So I really fear the five of you, and it bothers me, Mayor, that I think everything I've seen, besides you being a pathological liar based on what you said at the 2013 meeting with the CCC where you told them that moving the sewer would cost no more than 12 to 20 million dollars, which was not true. And it also bothers me that the five of you are sworn to represent the citizens of Morro Bay. That's what you're supposed to do, and yet you're ignoring the citizens of Morro Bay who are pretty much all in favor of leaving the sewer where it is and maybe spending $20 million to upgrade it, which will meet the needs of Morro Bay for the next 30 years, especially when the 3,000 people in Cayucas pull out. There'll be room for growth, and you know, $110 million is a lot of money, the difference, and that's if we build a brand-new sewer at the current location for 57 million, but I'm told that we could upgrade the one we have for 20 million and it'll last us for 30 years. So driving people, Morro Bay citizens, out of town because they can't afford to live here or making people on fixed income, elderly people, middle-class people, choose between food and medication or paying for sewer bills, I think is about as ugly as anything I could think of coming from politicians that are supposed to represent our best interests.
Thanks, Mark. Jeff Echols.
Good evening, council, staff, and neighbors. My name is Jeff Echols. I'm a resident of Morro Bay, a small business owner here in town, and a candidate for a second district supervisor. Boy, I've done a lot of work over the last three years in the county in terms of advocacy work, and before that was very active politically here in Morro Bay, and it's good to see that things are still just as spirited as they ever were here in Morro Bay with our local political environment. I'm going to address item C3. I appreciate you indulging me on that. I do have to go after this to feed my kids dinner. And thank you all for the comments relative to our school safety. As a parent of two 14-year-olds, I know I've got a grandfather up there and a teacher as well. It's devastating. It's devastating. With regard to item C3, first off, thank you for putting the resolution opposing offshore oil drilling. I was here speaking to you two weeks ago requesting that you do that amongst other concerned citizens. We do, as a city, have a proud history of opposing offshore drilling and preserving our environment, so I respectfully urge you, and I don't, I respectfully urge you to unanimously approve that resolution, and I don't expect there'll be any opposition to that. So I just wanted to thank you for that in anticipation of that. Secondly, a couple of items from the staff report from my old pal Eric Endersby, when I used to be chairman of the Harbor Advisory Board. There was one item in the staff report, as you're going to see, mentioning, and this is off of page four of the staff report, mentioning the water reclamation facility and then D cell, the desalination. You've got D cell up in the title, but you don't mention D cell in the body at all. So if you could address what it is that you wanted to talk to our representatives in DC about D cell, I would be very interested in that. That's part of my platform. And then lastly, in your report as well, in your letters that you're sending off to our Congress folks back east, you're mentioning that there are concerns over certain aspects of the sanctuary governance. And if you could elaborate on what those concerns are, that obviously is a big issue in the city and amongst our constituency, so I'd appreciate if you could elaborate on that. So thank you all for the good work that you're doing, and especially thank you for the resolution opposing offshore oil drilling.
All right, Jeff, thank you. I don't have any more speaker slips. Did I lose yours? Come on. I must have misplaced it. Erica, come on up. Anybody else for a public comment, by the way? Sorry about that, Erica. Oh, Erica Crawford, come on up.
I think I chicken-scratched it, so I understand. My name's Erica Crawford with the Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce. Good to see you, mayor and council, city staff. Just here to give you a little update, I'm just fresh from my annual conference with the Western Association of Chamber Executives. This year it happened in Henderson, Nevada, my first time to Las Vegas. I saw Cher, it was great. But it was a nice opportunity to connect with my peers. People there are coming from Oklahoma all the way up to Washington, Seattle. There are communities that are similarly sized with similar challenges to ours or opportunities, and huge, large chambers with robust membership and large budgets. So it was great to connect with them. I'm bringing that, well, I should tell you, some of the branding that we talk about at that conference is to be the three Cs chambers. That stands for, you know, being a catalyst for change in our communities, being champions of our communities, of healthy communities, and being conveners of leadership in our communities. So we are really digesting that and working it into our vision for our chamber. So we are doing two events this week. We have our second Voices Across the Bay. We started this, so this is in collaboration with our Astero Bay Chambers. So it's us, Los Osos', and Cayucas', this one. This is a demonstration of our strengthening partnership with SCORE, the Service Corps of Retired Entrepreneurs. They're bringing in some mentors to teach how to calculate profit margins, whether you're selling on Etsy, Amazon, or direct through your own website. So this is something that we're looking at with retail. E-commerce has its impacts retail, and also e-commerce is a way to earn revenue in our seasonal economy. So we are inviting the community to come to that. It is free, especially our business community. And then on Thursday evening, I have another flyer. We are doing, it's another kind of example of our growing partnership with Questa. So Patty Pistaresti has been in our community before. She taught on generational diversity about a year ago at our membership summit. This time, she's bringing some emotional intelligence EQ in business, but I think that this is also in leadership. You know, how are you looking at self-awareness? How are you growing your employees? How are you becoming and manifesting your emotional intelligence in your leadership? And then finally, wasn't going to do this, but I'm going to do it, soft opening on our new website. So we have, it's morrobaychamber.org. We will be redirecting our current website to this. It's kind of a soft opening. I'd love your feedback. We have a section there that allows businesses to post jobs and also to post commercial real estate listings. So if you can have a look, I'm open to your feedback. I think Jenny's pretty committed to the color scheme, but anything else in terms of operational, please let me know. Okay, thank you.
All right, Erica, thanks. Thanks for, give us an update on the conference that you went through. It's helpful, and I know that you're, we have something else coming up on the agenda. With that, that'll conclude our public comment. I'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Any comments from public comment that needs, that anybody wants to respond to? Marle, do you want anything? Anybody else? Matt? I'll go with Matt, then.
Yes, I received, actually, I'd like to respond to an email that I received, and actually, I see the gentleman here, Mr. Brandon, and, but I would like to use your email you sent me, and this is specifically about value engineering in terms of the WRF project. And I would like, if possible, to have, Rob, if you could speak two minutes to our WRF project and how value engineering is operating within the parameters of that project.
Sure. Trying to have another microphone go down here. Value engineering is inherent in the design-build process. It's a competitive process. Even with two firms, somebody wants to win that award. Teams will seek alternative processes to what was in the facilities master plan. As you remember, the facilities master plan was to establish a baseline budget for the project and to develop that along with the master water reclamation plan to establish a project description that could be fed into the environmental review. These alternative methods will make sure that they still meet all of our treatment quality requirements, and basically, firms do this to beat out their competition and to win the project at a lower price. As you recall, when we set the scoring criteria on the RFP for design-build, we adjusted the percentage for cost basically to 60% of the evaluation criteria. Additionally, in the contract that's contained within that RFP, there's a standard provision for value engineering and a cost-sharing incentive. So after the award, if the design builder comes up with cost-saving measures, they're split 50/50 with the city, and that's, mirrors the standard specifications in our Caltrans contract that we use as, for a lot of our projects. So that's a little bit on value engineering.
And likewise, if anybody would have a future question, it would be fine to contact you about such a topic?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thanks. Red?
Yeah, Rob, Aaron Oaks said that he talked to at least one of the contractors who pulled out of the bidding, and that contractor had a concern that Black and Beach has an advantage. Have you or anyone on city staff talked to the contractors who pulled out to find out what their reason was?
Yes, we have, and they didn't mention their concern with Black and Beach. They mentioned risk. We are going into a bidding process before we have funding in place, before we have rates in place to pay back that funding, so there were some risks. They also stated that there are other opportunities in California for them to propose on. We aren't the only game in town, so they were looking at perhaps a business, it was a business decision for them, which they made. They want, they needed to make that business decision before significant investments were made in the proposal process. It's estimated that to prepare those proposals, because they will have to do a design to get guaranteed maximum prices, it's going to cost them close to $500,000 for that work. And we are offering a $75,000 stipend. Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thanks. Anybody else? John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to respond to Mrs. Pam Oaks' comments, specifically pointed at myself, and I'll respond to that. She indicated I was less than honest. And as I recall, my comments regarding the funding and the potential for funding for our WRF project is not a grant. She characterized it as a grant. I've never said that it's a grant. It is a loan that we have been invited, as a community, to provide an application or apply for. One of 11 applications across the country for 11 different entities that have been asked to apply for. And I'll ask Mr. Livick to just comment on the fact that, it's my understanding, and you can reaffirm this or either correct me, that there's a fairly good chance that there's a potential for all 11 entities to be funded, and the fact that we were one of 11 throughout the country that were asked to be involved in this is quite an honor and speaks to, I think, the validity of our project. And so maybe if you could clarify that, I might not have articulated that clearly at the last meeting, but I want to make sure that there is transparency and honesty, which I always try to espouse here at the dais. Thanks.
Yes, thank you, Councilperson Eddie. Based on our discussions with EPA, who solicited letters of interest last year, 43 communities submitted letters of interest, 11, 12, were invited to apply for the WFI, Water Infrastructure Funding, I can't remember the acronym of the last two letters there, but it's Water Infrastructure Funding Program through Environmental Protection Agency. They indicated that there is funding for all those projects. They also indicated to us that the reason our project was selected is because it's innovative, it has coastal retreat component, and it has a robust water reclamation program. Just to add on a little bit about that, there was some discussion about $167 million versus $150 million. As you recall, what came out of the facilities master plan and water reclamation plan was a project that was estimated, estimated, your, their speakers are correct, nobody in this room or probably anywhere else knows what this project will cost. I think I've stated this before. We will know, once we pay that final bill, what it exactly costs. These are always estimates, and we get closer to what that cost is, the closer you get to construction completion. It was estimate, sorry, estimated at $167 million. The council directed staff to meet with a group of public works professionals from our community, public works directors that have had recent experience in constructing waste, large wastewater projects, and that was our brief value engineering exercise. And that was our brief value engineering exercise to look at reducing some of the components of the project, reducing the size of the admin facility, eliminating unnecessary odor control, there will still be odor control on the critical components, but they thought maybe we're over the top compacting the site, not including the courtyard, those components. That's how we got from $167 million to $150 million. And I'm confident through the bid process, the design-build bid process, we'll see further reductions in that cost.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Can I, can I also then ask you to follow up with Mr. Hanson's question, or actually his contention that we could just upgrade the existing plant? Is that a possibility?
Back in 2007, we had a project to upgrade the existing plant. Well, even before that, that was an upgrade project. The existing facility is well within the floodplain of Morro Creek, even without considering tsunami or coastal hazards. It is subject to flooding as it sits right now. It must be protected per our permit to the 100-year. We cannot, without major floodproofing, that would cause an increase of water on adjoining properties, upgrade the existing plant where it is. The 2010, '07 to '10 project that was ultimately denied at Coastal was to relocate that facility to the south, still on jointly owned property, but it was a relocation project. I would say there's very little opportunity to upgrade that project. Many of the components there are from the original 1950s construction and are done. They are worn out, they are well past their useful life. Hard to say that since I am a product of the 50s also, but, and I don't see myself as being done yet. But yes, it would be difficult, if not impossible, to upgrade the existing facility.
And can you tell us what kind of conditions the Regional Water Quality Control Board has placed on us with respect to our need to adhere to state standards?
Sure. Our existing facility has an ocean discharge. Will at least need to meet the ocean plan requirements, which is a secondary treatment The community, through our goals, has a desire to increase that level of treatment, to discharge tertiary disinfected water to the ocean and to protect our ocean community. In addition to the treatment requirements, we have a time constraint. We have a permit that was issued in December that has a five-year life on it. Our existing facility cannot meet, even with or without Kayukas, cannot meet permit limits. We will be issued, within the next few weeks, a time schedule order telling us that we have to complete the new facility. They can, the Regional Water Quality Control Board can grant a maximum of five years. We anticipate a five-year grant to do that, but that's all we'll have. That's all the time that the regional board can protect us from these existing, they're no, not new requirements, they've been in place for quite some time, to protect us from monetary penalties due to not meeting these requirements.
And what are those monetary penalties that we could be assessed if we don't meet that time limit?
The, there's two stages of penalties. One is assessed by the regional board, three, a minimum of $3,000 per day per violation. Each violation is a new violation, so. And then we are also subject to Clean Water Act penalties, and those can be garnered through citizen action, citizen lawsuit against the city, $26,200, I think they started at $25,000 back in the 80s or 90s, and I think they're up to $26,000 per day. And those would be the civil penalties that could be awarded. Not to scare you, but you know, the plan is to come in compliance with the permit requirements.
That's one of our main goals for this project, is to actually meet the state requirements.
Correct.
Thanks.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Yeah? Red? Yeah? Follow up?
Rob, the fines that would be levied upon the city would be paid by whom? By the council members?
No. By the wastewater fund, by the, basically by the ratepayers.
All right. So rates?
So in effect, the council members would have a little share of that.
So through a mandate, the city's water rates would be raised to the amount required to pay those fines? Is that correct?
Well, I don't know how that would work, because California has Prop 218. I see Joe getting the microphone, so he's going to help me out with this one. I'm going to call a friend.
There isn't an easy answer to that question. It would be, the city would be responsible, meaning the city's general fund, the city enterprise fund, whatever resources the city has available would be responsible to pay that back. The only resource that the city gets is from taxes and fees. So the city would have to figure out a way to be able to increase those fees. If part of the fees was raising taxes, the tax raise would have to be approved by the public or the electors, but if they didn't approve it, the city would still have to pay it. So you may have to reduce services where you are doing nothing but paying the fees, the penalties.
And at some point, there's just no money to do anything, is that correct? Has this situation ever happened in California?
That a city, that a city had been required to pay penalties that they couldn't pay?
Yeah.
No, because the city's correct, the thing that was causing the penalties, so they don't have to pay the penalties. Or they pay a reduced penalty, or they make a deal with whoever's finding them, saying, we'll pay a reduced rate at this level as we're fixing the problem.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Okay. With that, we'll conclude our public comment, and we'll move on. Our next item on the agenda is consent. We have two items on consent. Any items to pull from council, or is there a motion to approve the consent?
I will approve consent.
Okay. We have a motion. I don't have any speakers for anything on consent, and I'll just scan the audience to make sure we have any public comment. Seeing none, pardon me, I missed that. So, Marleus, we have a?
I move approve consent items.
Second.
So we have a motion by Marleus, a second by John, to approve consent. Any discussion? None? All in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries. All right. Moving on, we've got our first item of business. Item C1 is discussion approval of the 2018 goals and objectives. And this is Scott Collins, our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, Scott Collins, city manager. And just wanted to give a brief update on the city council goals and objectives, and really turn it back to council for deliberation. As council and the communities aware, the city council hosted a retreat on February 2nd, so we'll talk about that. We'll talk about the outcomes of that, which were creation of goals and objectives and the action items that helped bring those to life. Talk about the analysis of the outcome of that retreat, and then ultimately, some recommended next steps for council. So the retreat was held on February 2nd at the community center. We had good attendance from the public on short notice, we appreciate that. It was a really, really good process orchestrated by our facilitator, City of Slow Fire Chief Garrett Olson, who did a tremendous job, made it fun for a four-hour event, kept everybody engaged, council engaged. And ultimately, what we were able to accomplish was a review of the goals and objectives established by city council in 2017. You had about four goals and roughly 32 objectives established. That was good work done to whittle down from 10 goals and over 80 objectives, which was, became burdensome for everyone to both achieve in calendar years and also with the staff resources available. So the 17 was a good effort in bringing it into sharp focus. And this retreat was another attempt to really narrow down to the core things that council wants to get achieved in the next few years. It was also good that we were able to note that a lot of things that aren't here on these goals and objectives are the day-to-day operations of staff, the core services, the things that the community relies upon, public safety, our code enforcement, planning of public works, maintenance, fire services, emergency services, harbor services, the administrative stuff, the things that you don't see as members of the public, but allows our city to function. I think we do a great job. And as the facilitator noted, these goals are really oriented towards the future in addressing some of the known issues, some of the scary things like cowpers, but also the opportunities, the positive looking forward to take us to the next level as a community. We're able to introduce new items to consider, and then ultimately, the process for the remainder of that retreat was to rank the objectives and goals that were identified using a dining metaphor, which was, I thought, pretty interesting and fun, was using, you know, basically if you had the plate, that's the things you're going to take, deal with right away. And then there was the cauldron, which are the second tier of priorities, simmer, moving further away from eating, that became the third tier, and then the refrigerator for items that maybe we would hold on to for a year or two, and then the trash can for those things that maybe either we've accomplished or aren't going to consider in the future. Out of that retreat came the following five goals. As we mentioned, we started with four, and the fifth one added on. So chief among them is the financial and economic sustainability of our community, which was highlighted during our tenure forecast discussion earlier today. We're really trying to plan, both on the expenditure side and the revenue side, how to bring ourselves into structural balance over the long term, and also help our economy grow in a way that maintains the character of our community. The second goal is the water reclamation facility and One Water Plan. Both of those are kind of joined at the hip. Ultimately, what that does is secure our water future across the board going forward, and really trying to implement that in a way that is, that has cost savings and is, you know, that we can get through with the community and have support for. That's what this year is going to be focused on. The third item is public spaces and infrastructure, that's really around cleanliness and also planning for our future. Then the fourth is all the land use plans that are coming forward, our general plan, local coastal plan, and our zoning updates, which really sets the tone for the next 20 years for our community. And the last was this idea that, you know, maybe we could look at how we communicate with our community in terms of outreach, engagement, general communications, just an assessment of how we're doing, what we can do differently and better. And at the end of that day, council provided direction, general direction to staff to review the outcomes of the retreat, and really kind of do an analysis of available resources and make some recommendations and modifications if necessary. So that's what we've been doing the last, I guess, several weeks. So I wanted to give a high-level look at those goals and objectives. There are 33 action items that were identified, either carry forwards from the previous year and some new ones added on. So I don't know if council wants me to go over each of those, maybe just start at the high level and then just get questions.
I think the high level? Yeah. High level sounds good.
We'll go with that. Okay, again, the first goal, as I mentioned, is financial and economic sustainability for the community. And there are many action items in there, but they're kind of grouped into two major categories. The first is securing financial sustainability through a comprehensive look at our costs and our revenues. The second major bucket for the economic and financial sustainability is really around economic development. We have several plans that have been recently approved by council, the first being the Economic Development Roadmap, which is an excellent review of our opportunities, and then more specifically, our waterfront and downtown strategic plans, which look at what we can do in those targeted areas, and ultimately, identify the action items that are going to generate revenue in the short term, since we're trying to seek that balance. So there are, like I said, many objectives and action items identified within that, which we can talk about in more detail. The second goal, as I mentioned, is WRF and One Water Review and Implementation. And there are several action items for the WRF specifically this year, as this is a critical year, as we look at funding, we look at the EIR, we look at, you know, getting bids back on our RFP, loan subsidizations, acquiring the site, just a lot going on, looking at ways that we can reduce the impacts to ratepayers. And then the One Water is kind of going along with that as well, to look at how we can secure our water future. And then the third, the third goal is public infrastructure and facility cleanliness. There's been a lot of ground made on this goal, particularly enhancing our maintenance crew numbers and really getting a good plan of action, consolidating all of those folks into one place. And I think, as I mentioned to council a few meetings ago, I did a tour of all our facilities and our parks and our restrooms, and they're immaculate. The team does a great job. Granted, it's not in the middle of summer, I know it gets harder once you have 20,000 people here, but they do a great job of maintaining those facilities. So those are actually action items that we've accomplished and have now just become an ongoing part of the operations. But within this goal, there's action items that look at how to engage our volunteer groups to further beautification of the city, the RFQ process for the boatyard potential, and then adopt a thing policy, which will be coming back to council soon. The next major goal area is, as I mentioned, land use plans and our zoning update. That's kind of it. And there are so many pieces that are joined to that, and the planning department is doing UN's effort to not only engage the public, but also the regulatory bodies that oversee, see these plans and the zoning policies to make sure we're in compliance. And a lot of that information will be coming back to council in September, and maybe even sooner through some study sessions. And then the last goal area is improved communications. Ultimately, I think what this requires is some level of assessment, either we do it ourselves or bring somebody in to look at, you know, where we're succeeding and where we aren't. I think we have ideas about how we're doing, but you know, it's always worth, you know, outside objective viewpoint on that, to see how we can strengthen our outreach, look at other ways of connecting with our community members and improving what we already do So following, following all this, I took some time to put this together into spreadsheets that council has and are on the website with the agenda packet. As I mentioned, we have identified 33 objectives. There were some that we added on that kind of constituted an initiative that go beyond our day-to-day activities. There's been a few that also have been raised since this time by city council, so those are part of that process. But ultimately, these objectives and initiatives are really important. There's nothing in here that is fluff, that is extra. How I look at that is that, you know, city council really identified the things that are critical to the organization and to our community. It's ambitious, given that, you know, we are a small city, and there are several departments that are heavily impacted by the work plan, but it's all good work. So it really comes down to careful planning and scheduling to make sure we succeed. Just note a caution that any additional items that would potentially be added to the work plan at this point could stress or over-stress the system, so we have to be careful and consider the work plan throughout the year. And should we have any? And should we have any changes in funding or staffing levels, we want to leave open the opportunity to potentially modify the work plan because I think what we heard from council and the community is that we want to get things done and not continue to push things out into the future. And so we take that, take that very seriously. So we want to put things out there that we can do for you and for the community. So what we recommend tonight is council deliberation and any modifications that you see fit for, for this as we move forward. And then what I intend to do with, with staff is to help improve the spreadsheets that we've provided and make it more of a public-friendly document that also includes a calendar, so community members have an idea of when these things will come forward. And then also do quarterly reports on the status update of, of the plan starting in July. That concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Okay. Great, Scott, thanks. We can go on to council questions at this point. I don't have any speaker slips for public comment on this items, just a reminder for those who might want to speak to this item, that'd be helpful. And we'll go through questions. If we don't have a public comment, then we'll go into deliberation from council. Let's look to my left. No questions? Red, Matt?
I do have a question. What would now be the time, I have a question, but it also concerns an email that we received about these goals. And so maybe I should, let me leave it, actually, let me leave it for discussion.
Okay, all right, that'd be great. Yeah, thanks.
No, no questions.
Good. John or Marla's? John?
I think mine are just comments, so.
Okay.
No question.
All right, good. Marla's?
Well, I was able to ask my questions of Scott, and he's answered all of my questions. The one I think I just would like to mention for the benefit of, of everybody here, we have previously written goals and objectives for the fiscal year, and I noted that this is for the calendar year. So I had a discussion with Scott about why that was, and I wanted to clarify that. And it might help if you at least address that issue about the timeframe that these goals are meant to apply and why it is a calendar year and not a fiscal year.
Good, good question. Yeah, I mean, my, my, where I was starting from is that we, this council's been together for a year, and they have another year together, and that, that could change with the election. So it's really focused on what this group of five can do together, and that's why I used the calendar year as kind of the cutoff point. But, you know, even if there were a change in council, there, there's work, work just doesn't stop because you have a new council. There's, there's carry forward, so the assumption is some of these things may actually be completed this year, but a lot of times it's just coming back to council with updates, seeking direction, and that work's still gonna carry forward. So that, that was kind of the thinking and, and that with a new council there, be more of a, probably a more robust outreach to the community and, and looking at holistically at all the goals, but that work would still continue. So I, I mean, you could really see this extending into maybe the end of next fiscal year.
And then I just wanted to, I noticed that on the, just comparing last year's to this year's, that we left off several different sub-objectives under increasing TOT. And I wanted to know if, I, I wasn't sure how that happened and if the council would like to even revisit some of those, since we didn't really have a discussion about eliminating them. And the one that I'm particularly would like us to talk about is the, we had as an objective last year, research and bring to council for decision incentive programs, including a TOT rebate program that would reasonably result in the renovation of some existing hotel stock and deliver higher daily rates and thus higher TOT. And I don't know if we, I noticed it's not on this year's, and I just don't know if we want to talk about, do we really want to eliminate that or do we want to consider that? I didn't recall that we did at the, at, at the workshop we had.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. I think that might have just been an oversight.
So we, we could still bring that up. Okay, and then just for the sake of clarifying on the WRF project, I, I think it's important that we understand the background and history and know where we're at, and we covered a number amount, a certain amount of that information earlier. But I just wanted to make sure that at this point, and I'll ask Rob, we don't really have a final cost for the WRF, and we don't, we don't have any planned rate study in progress now, so we don't have any proposed rates. Is that correct?
We have, for the site itself, we have a RFP out that we'll be getting, for lack of a better word, bids on, that will feed into a rate study. We have a rate consultant on board. They're laying some of the groundwork to plug those numbers into. It's not only the, the WRF project that will play into the rates, it's the One Water Capital Facilities Planning that will play into the rates also. We have a water capital facilities plan from nineteen ninety-five and a wastewater from the early two thousands. Those needed to be updated so we could have some realistic, there's other things in the system besides the WRF that have to be maintained and replaced. So we needed to get good costs for those in the rate analysis.
But at this point, there, there is no proposed rate?
Correct.
Thank you. Actually, one last question if I could. This is under Goal Five, lease site evaluations and audits on a three-year rotating basis. Can I just ask what the purpose of those audits is? Is it more for the condition of the building or the?
I'll, I'll answer that. That was something I brought up.
Okay.
Okay, so that was during, it's been over a year ago when we were talking about, actually, it was when we were adopting the goals and objectives for our advisory boards, and I initiated that item for the purpose of auditing each one of our lease sites, as it says, at least a third annually, and then over a three-year period, we can audit that. We can audit them for conforming, conformance to the CUP. We can audit them for, you know, any kind of safety things, signage, whatever that policy may come back, to what level of detail. Obviously, we'll have to be careful on, you know, how much we're asking for, but to a large degree, we need to have, in my view, and it was supported, so some, some level of assessment of those lease sites on a more regular basis, and we didn't have that. So I was looking for a policy, and there was support to do that. So at some point, we would look at a policy and whether or not this council would choose to adopt and move forward, something would, that would be the discussion. But that was, I speak to that because I initiated that, that conversation.
And I was just curious to see if it had more to do with the condition of the facility or if it was, if it was also a financial audit of some kind, and I.
And that's, that's a part where it could come to, and we can start shaping that. But, you know, that, in, in general terms, you know, that's, that's, that's something that would be, probably dive into in more details.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions then? Seen none? And I don't have any speaker slips, I'm looking for public comment, so no public comment, closed public comment, and we'll bring it back for discussion, and then I'll just shift to my left and look for Mr., Mr. Davis to start us off on discussion.
I guess I'll just say that I'm happy with the result of our retreat and the way you have tabulated council's directions. One thing that's of particular importance to me is the Goal One B, develop a staff internal emergency cost reduction plan to inform future fiscal emergencies. Just a, a plan for how do we deal with a sudden financial problem such as we had last year with the cowpers? We thought that was an enormous problem, and we didn't really have a plan for that. And I, that's an important aspect to me as we move forward, and I have great confidence and faith in Jennifer and her ability to analyze resources and come up with a, a nice plan. So other than that, I'm, I'm good with the goals.
Okay, Matt?
Yes, in terms of discussion, I, I think we've made strides in terms of cutting this down from ten goals, eighty objectives, to less than half. And yes, I mean, I am very wary in terms of overburdening staff. And I think between that, the tension of that, and then understanding that we want to meet the goals of the city and also of our electorate, I think we're making progress. I also, as an high school English teacher, I very much appreciated the metaphor of the, from the plates to the trash, so thank you very much. I've used that in my class almost since our retreat, and so selfishly, I thank you. Also, in terms, we have had a comment sent to us via email, and this places, and it came from Ms. Betty Winholz, and she was talking about, she had a number of comments, and they were very nice and very well thoughtful. And we were talking, and when we think about the totality of breaking this down from ten goal to four, and the one item she pointed out, I thought was interesting and really appreciated, that was Goal Number Two, Item G, when we talk about our low-income program and trying to help our low-income ratepayers. And for granted, we have roughly fifty-four hundred ratepayers. And when we talk about it right now, we have a very minimal help in terms of doing it, roughly depends on how much water they use, could be close to ten percent of someone's bill. And the comment was that this wasn't sufficient. And, and so I called a number of our municipalities in the county, and I found out that from Paso Robles to Aurora Grande to Atascadero to, that San Luis Obispo was the only municipality that had such a program, and they had one for fifteen percent. San Luis has roughly fifteen thousand ratepayers, and they're offering fifteen percent for low-income assistance. The other municipalities don't have anything. They refer people to something like the Salvation Army, which is, you know, notable. So our program is not necessarily perfect. In a perfect world, I wish we'd have a lot more money to help our low-income people on fixed incomes. But with these goals and objectives paring them down, I think by the work that we're doing, and we collectively from staff and community members and council, we're making progress here. And so with all that said, I think, I like the goals as stated. I also want to tread with trepidation that we don't want to overburden the various players involved, especially staff and our, just staff and as a whole. But other than that, I like the goals and objectives.
Thanks, Matt. Thanks for doing the work on the Goal Two G on that. Thanks. John?
Thank you. Thank you to Mr. Olson, who's in the audience. I wanted to shout out again to you. I appreciate the City of San Luis Obispo lending you to us, your great expertise and facilitation, it's part of the low-income program, yes, and your facilitation skills were, were very helpful, and I'm, and thanks for being here tonight as well. Thanks, Scott and staff, for putting all this together in a meaningful document that's a lot easier to read, for distilling it down and, and making it useful. Certainly, I, I like the format of, of the action plan, having the item noted, who's responsible, the lead individual, the date of completion, the outcomes, et cetera, and, and a report on the current status, which I understand will be updated quarterly. The one thing that I would globally ask is that we identify, and we've talked about this, metrics for measuring our achievement of the goals. A couple of specifics that I had recommendations for, not many, but just, just a couple. Goal Number One, Item Number Two B, which is, let's see if I get to the right page here, Item Two B, it has to do.
Two B or Two G?
It's Goal One, Two B, as in boy.
Okay.
Yeah, evaluate memorandum of understanding with Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce to further economic development objectives. And I, I did have the time to meet with Scott and talk about that in detail. And my, my issue is similar to what Joan mentioned when she came to the podium this evening and talked about economic development and putting together contingent of individuals that would more broadly represent all of the disciplines that, that are necessary for that. I have great confidence in the leadership of the chamber. What I, what I personally don't want to see is that we, we move economic development into a box and make, make the assumption that it's gonna happen at the Chamber of Commerce. That's, that's just my concern, and I'm noting that as a concern. I think I, I do support, I know I support, an MOU with their leadership and possibly facilitation. I have great confidence in Erica and, and her leadership. But what I don't want to see happen is, is an MOU being developed for all of the activities to occur there. So that's my comment on that one. Item Three A, which has to do with the T-Bid, I, I wanted to just comment, and I think I heard it a couple of times during the budget presentation, that we're due a full evaluation of the operation of the T-Bid since the city took it over, and I believe that's coming in April, around there, April or May, and that, that would be part of this action item, that, that full review. We have a charter that has been developed. We have an ordinance that has been written, and it would be great to have a full, comprehensive report, and so I'm hoping that that's part of this objective also. And then Goal Number Five, Item Two D, I have to get the nomenclature right, Goal Five, Two D, that has to do with the lease site issue, and I gotta get there to the right Right, the evaluation of, there it is, lease site evaluation audits on a three-year rotating I, I'm extremely, been thoughtfully made aware recently going through a process of dealing with one specific lease site holder, that there is a, there is a need to evaluate not only the financial components of the leases, but also the, the quality and adherence to certain guidelines of the, the building or the structure that's been constructed on city land. And I'm assuming that's gonna be all part of this. There are a couple of other references to harbor activity that I think could be moved into this. We talked about that this morning. I won't outline those, but I, I think combining those would be helpful. And for me, in, in going through the process that I was involved in, by the way, Eric did a fantastic job of leading us through that and coming to some conclusions and finality with that. I, I would like to make sure that, that this happens more quickly than not, because I, I think there are risk issues that are out there. I have concern that there's possibly, could be liability or culpability for the city. And I just want to request and, and, and make my concerns available that this one, with the limited resources that we have in the harbor department, because I know Eric and staff are extremely busy, moves up with regard to timing, and that we do the evaluations as quickly as possible and as many as possible so that we can mitigate potential risk issues in the future. And again, that comes from mainly the involvement that we've had recently in detailed evaluation of current lease site. And I think my last comment is that on the simmer page, which is One A, on simmer, that's the, there is an active council subcommittee that continues the, there is an active council subcommittee that continues to work on the existing site, the Dynegy site, which is really not the Dynegy site anymore, since Dynegy has been acquired. And it might be a simmer item, but there is activity that occurs more or less on a routine basis, although not frequently, with the mayor and myself, who sit on that subcommittee, and I just don't want that to get lost as it's been pushed aside, because it is important to maintain that relationship, and I think that's going to come to fruition, hopefully, soon, in terms of something happening. So, those are my comments, and again, thanks for all the great work that you've done and for putting this together.
All right, John, great. Garrett, I do, as well, want to, I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, Marla, I thought, pardon me for overlooking you, Marla, I did. So, I'll let Marla express her thanks, and then I'll get on, sorry about that.
Well, I could have gone last, too, I guess, but that would be breaking precedent.
Pardon me.
Well, I also appreciate the format of the goals and objectives this year, and the retreat was fun, and thank you, Garrett, that was a very useful exercise, and it helped us to really focus in. Interestingly enough, as often happens, I have some of the same comments as John, so I will repeat them. My first one was, it pertained to Goal Number One, Objective Two-B, evaluating the memorandum of understanding with the Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce, and I would just like to add in language that says "and/or other arrangements," because while I fully support exactly what John said about Erica and her ability to handle that, I share that concern also, and I think we should take into account Joan's comments, and just to make sure that we actually do that, I would just add that language "and/or other arrangements," and then continue to further economic development objectives. So, it just makes it obvious that we are doing that.
Marla, can I pause there and just get head nods from everybody that there, is everybody okay with that? All right, good. Thanks.
Okay, and then, I also shared John's issue about evaluating the effectiveness of in-house tourism, and wanted to make sure that that was part of that objective, or it was listed as a separate one, and as long as it's clear that that is part of it, that's fine, the way it's written. But then, I-
Did we get some clarification on that? Both you guys mentioned that, and I just want to be clear on what we expect and what we're going to get out of that.
Well, I thought we were going to get that. That was my understanding, that that was part of what we were going to do when it was brought in-house, was to evaluate the effectiveness of it.
Yes, so, from the retreat, perspective of the retreat, what council came to consensus on was that staff would bring forward an item to talk about vacation rental and RV assessments to be part of the T-Bid, because they stand to benefit from the current marketing efforts done on behalf of the entire Morro Bay region, and just a sense of fairness for the benefit they receive. And staff, following the retreat, added in bold, as well as a general discussion of T-Bid tourism and transient occupancy tax, or commonly known as hotel tax. So, it's really the opportunity to bring back information to council about how we're doing. So, if you want to refine that now, that's completely appropriate, we can take direction from there.
The program evaluation, the way that I had, I had a couple of notes here, would be how successful the transition to the city has been, and some of the measures of success would be a report on the marketing program, hotelier involvement, board function, adherence to the initial, or the existing ordinance, and then the financial report that's coming, statistics on ADRs, occupancy rates, TOT projections, those kinds of things compared to the past. That's-
Yes, I agree, and on the occupancy rates, it really, we need to compare to some of the other communities in San Luis Obispo County that we may compete with, because obviously we are also part of the San Luis marketing effort, and so we need to somehow make some distinctions between our own versus what other work, what else we're getting.
That's a great time to plug. On Thursday, morning, nine o'clock here, Vets Hall, the T-Bid Annual Stakeholder Meeting will be held, which is an opportunity for hoteliers, moteliers, restaurateurs, general public to come and learn about how we're doing, and then that will, that'll be great to take that discussion to council and really answer all these questions.
Could you repeat that?
Yeah, so it's nine o'clock this Thursday, the Vets Hall, that's the T-Bid Annual Stakeholders' Meeting.
Didn't we all get an invitation to that?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Just putting it out there.
Yeah, thanks.
There's a free breakfast before then at 8:30, right?
And there's no, just for my comment, there's no hidden agenda behind that, other than we owe it to ourselves and the public and to our hoteliers to report back. And I guess I forgot to include also how we're doing with the county-wide participation, slow, yeah, exactly.
And you?
Yeah, and then, I guess I would like us to have the discussion about whether or not we want to drop that, the possible TOT rebate program from the objectives, which I think was just, we just slipped. But we should decide whether or not we do want to do that.
So, can I ask a question, Scott, on that? How would a reboot, who would be delegated that responsibility?
I think I'm looking across at him over here, Mr. Graham.
So, it was, it was under the deputy city manager position as lead. I was working with our two previous deputy city managers. As we were going through that process, we, you know, we started rationing it up a little bit and looking at it to look at what implementation might look like and what looked like a process would be for that. And then, those folks cycled out, and we don't have a deputy city manager any longer. So, we just need to pick it back up. I mean, it's actually, I think it's one of the things that was discussed, might be one of the items out of the Economic Development Strategic Plan as well, where it was discussed. So, I mean, what it looks like is, you reach out and see if there's anybody interested in that process whereby we would say rebate, our TOT number is 10%, and so you could rebate 5% of that over a certain period of time for a certain amount of investment. There are cities out there that have programs that are similar to that, and when Conny was here, he had gotten a hold of a couple of different, at least one, plan that would reference that, because I remember him talking to me about it, and had to go dig that back out again and see where that started. And he had a couple of other jurisdictions that did something similar as well, so he had a couple of leads on that, so we just need to kind of dig that back up and pick it back up and get rolling, yeah.
So, I guess my question, pardon me, would be, I would like, I don't want to see that drop off, but if it's on Scott's responsibility, if it was delegated to him, thinking about other priorities, if we were to rank that, it would probably be down in a simmer range or even refrigerator, if it would be picked up next year. That's my comments on maintaining that, not forgetting it, definitely not putting in the trash, but I just, that's, those are my comments in how I would want to rate that, and I would like to hear from the rest of council on how they would like to see that done.
If I could add to that, in consideration of the conversations we've had, not just at the Goals Conference, but talking through the last year, a couple of years, and in the TOT, and understanding that that's very volatile, and trying to get our moteliers and hoteliers on board, I am in favor of doing some sort of incentive program, but I do follow your logic, and also, Jamie, in terms of placing it. I would not want to see it in the trash can, I concede it in the refrigerator, just in terms of more, in a better atmosphere, perhaps, going forward.
I think I'd want to put it in the cauldron, keep it.
Keep it simmering?
Keep, yeah, keep it simmering, low simmer. Just because, I think Scott's going to be finished with the general plan update in September, and he may have more time, and as long as it's there on our list, he could work on it. And remember, this is, if it's in the cauldron, it's not necessarily for even this year, but it just suggests that it's still a priority and we still want, at least more information about the program, even if we don't actually implement it, I'd like to see more information about how it works and what we might gain from it and that sort of thing.
So, maybe the middle ground is, during the report in May, y'all could come back with your thoughts about the feasibility, viability, and possibility of even funding such a program, and we could, you know what I'm saying? So, that it's still before us, and further consideration could be given at that time when we get the report.
Red?
What John said.
Okay, so, what John said was, didn't answer the question on exactly where we're going to put that. Does that mean we've got Scott maintaining the simmer button on that, or somebody actually putting it in the refrigerator? And I guess Scott just, you know, I think where there is consideration to make sure we don't forget about this, so between the two Scots, I just want to make sure that we're, there's other priorities, and we're not forgetting about this one, that's for sure.
I think it's a valuable tool and one that we need to investigate, and to see whether there's interest, you know, in our hotel community about doing that. So, I mean, that's the starting point, so it may could be something that's slowly looked out over time, because you have to engage them and see what they're interested in or not, so, and then sort of frame what it might look like moving forward, so, yeah.
Okay. All right, so it looks like we've got, we're all, go ahead, Matt.
Scott, with that said, I guess by saying what you just, and how you said it, then you figure it's feasible on the workload for you to start to investigate that and put that out there slightly with our hoteliers?
I don't think there's much work involved with that.
Okay, got it, that's what I mean. And John, I really appreciate, and Marla, in terms, I see your point, I just really hate for us to get down to another goal season next year and go, oh, yeah, another one we didn't do. However, I see the vitality of it, totally with it, it makes complete sense, especially to get more people on board in the city, so, okay. If Scott, you think it's doable, then?
Again, and doable, I mean, I think it's, we can do some of the outreach, to see if there's interest in it, and then do a little bit of, you know, homework on what it might look like, so people understand what that is and what they're answering yes or no to, meaning the hotel community. That's not a lot of work, so that's something that we could, that would start the process, start the conversation moving forward, and then, you know, implementation of the program would probably happen down the road.
Got it. So, with that said, and John, with your idea, talking about the, going forward, especially with these big plans coming to a close, perhaps that would be good to get it started, so I think I could come back out of the refrigerator.
Okay, so it looks like we're on simmer with the TOT program, so we're adding one more thing, Scott?
Okay.
To simmer.
Yeah.
To simmer, not to the plate.
No, yeah, and I'm not done yet.
Okay, all right.
I, I'm just, this is a suggestion to consider, renaming Goal Number Three, Public Infrastructure and Facility Improvements, as opposed to Cleanliness, which I just thought was a little too narrow.
Which goal?
Three, Public Infrastructure and Facility Improvements.
I like it.
All right. I just, Cleanliness is a little too specific. Allows for more, yeah. Okay.
Read the specific goal.
Just the word.
On the Public Infrastructure Facility Cleanliness, so you just want to change that to?
Public Infrastructure and Facility Improvement.
Okay.
Goal Number Three-B, I want to keep the objective as written, but I just noted in the current status that it looked like staff was already developing a feasibility RFP, and what we really asked for was to bring back the results from the RFQ process for a marine services facility boatyard, for information and consideration of next steps, and possibly issuing a feasibility study. So, we hadn't really made a decision yet on that, and I think we need to maintain the integrity of that objective.
I'm just catching up to you, so I was writing my notes, so go ahead, I'm sorry.
I said, keep the objective as it's stated, but just make sure that in the anticipated council date and completion and current status, work isn't being done on the feasibility study yet, because we haven't really approved moving forward with it.
Any comments?
Sure, I'll take a shot. So, we did go through an RFQ process, got no responses. We were intending to-
RFQ?
RFQ, correct, for any combination of design, build, operate, public-private partnership of a boatyard in the Triangle Lot area, no responses to that. The next step would be a financial feasibility RFP that we would develop and bring back to council for consideration of issuing it in next steps. So, I'm working with the Boatyard Ad-Hoc Committee and the Harbor Advisory Board right now, to put that together to bring to the council. Does that answer where we are?
I can't.
Does that answer where you're at, Marla?
Are they, are they writing an RFP, is that what you're saying, to, with the, something that would be suitable to send out?
Correct, I'm working with the Ad-Hoc Committee on that.
I guess I agree with Marla that that's a little, that's a step farther than I thought we had agreed to go.
Me, too.
Yeah.
Council had previously authorized up to, I want to say, $45,000 or $50,000 for financial feasibility RFP, and to come back to council before issuing.
That doesn't say feasibility.
I guess we could take another step back and say, come back to council before even putting it together and consider issuing it.
As I recall our discussion, it was that if there was absolutely no interest in an RFQ, maybe we weren't going to even move forward with a feasibility study, because nobody was interested in doing it. So, it seemed to me we hadn't had that discussion yet, and that was my recollection.
That's my recollection as well. I, I'm not sure I remember that we authorized spending $50,000.
We pulled back on that, yeah.
Yeah, because we were, because we were putting out an RFQ first.
We had, we had gotten the authorization with the, with the council's direction to bring it back before issuing. We, as staff, after that action took place, we went down the path of RFQ to see if anybody would step forward, rather than spend the money on RFP, and I hate to mix those two terms up constantly, but to keep them straight, before we went down the RFP path and spent money on financial feasibility study, we said, let's go out and see if anybody's interested in coming in and building this thing. I don't think that we got no responses necessarily means that there's absolute no response or it's not potentially financially feasible. I think just at the state that we were with council commitment to the, to the project, ownership of the lot, and the unknowns of what it would cost to build something, no firm was ready to just go out and throw their hat in the ring and say, okay, I'm interested, I'm ready to go.
You're not spending $50,000 to develop the RFP, you're going to bring it back before you're authorized to go out with an RFP for $50,000, correct?
Correct.
Oh, so.
And if I remember, if I can chime in, we had decided to go with the feasibility, people were a little bit leery to go with the feasibility study, and then Eric came back and said, all right, well, let's try this RFQ process, and then come back, and so they did, there's no takers, and so now, going down this way in terms of the feasibility study and the RFP, just in terms of due process, all right?
And I'm fine if we want to come back and bring it back to council and do, get everything-
I think, I think having to come back would be part of that reality check, you know, and sometimes there's large gaps, obviously, as we're working on things, yeah.
Well, may I say that since the Harbor Advisory Board has a subcommittee already working on the RFP, that, that we take a recommendation from them as to a direction that they think council should follow, whether, whether to go ahead and, and investigate an RFP, or whether the RFQ was a message that, that we shouldn't follow up. So, you know, they're closer to it than we are, and I'd like to hear what their recommendation is.
Which was, is my intent, was to, to run this through the HAB before we got it back to council.
You are so good, Eric, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are we clear on that one, then?
No.
Okay. And I'm just going to go back to goal three, Marlis, you said, public infrastructure, facility improvement?
Yeah.
I'm just gonna, so, first of all, I just want to make sure we're all good with that, and then, I know it's, as we're getting to being literal on our, what we're choosing for words, I know it did start out as cleaning, so I'm just going to say maintenance and improvement.
I was about to say maintenance.
Yeah, maintenance and improvement.
Sure.
All right, so, are we okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So goal three, we'll have to, we'll have to read all this back as we get going.
Okay, and then, this is my last.
Okay.
I think it's my last. This is goal number five, D. I think that's the one we were just talking about. Yes, two D, yeah, the lease site evaluations. I just didn't see it as a communication issue. I would have moved it to, that's why I wanted to know what the purpose was. It's either to increase our revenues, or it's to improve our infrastructure. Yeah.
Any comments, Scott, on that?
I think adding it to the goal one, objective two, item D, which is establish a partnership, it really should be partnership criterion, I think adding lease site audits to that, and those all kind of get wrapped into the lease management policy update under the kind of goal one area.
Yeah, that was my comment about combining.
Yeah, all of them together, yeah.
Right, okay. All right, this is my last one.
No, none of that, that was it.
No.
That was it.
I didn't turn my page over. This is my last one. Move goal five, objective two C to goal one. That's the community choice energy feasibility, isn't that a cost-saving measure?
Doesn't save the city funding. It could save ratepayers money, so you could see that as an economic argument, for sure.
I just didn't put it under...
I thought, I thought we had that under, we, I thought we did have that under a previous category that was, that was more aligned with that personally.
Could be, could be. But it was not part of it, and then it got added back, so I just put it in miscellaneous. But happy to put it into economic sustainability.
Communication and...
Yeah.
Yeah.
It doesn't...
So, so your comments on that was to, and we can...
I just thought that that was one of the purposes of that, is to save money.
Yeah. It can, and it can serve as an economic engine for, for the communities. If you save money on PG eight rates that come back, and the CCA, or CCE, whatever you call it, can invest in local solar or other alternative energy.
Right. I did see it as an economic development idea. Anyway, all right, I'm done now.
Okay, that's it?
Yeah, that's...
Okay, all right, all right, thank you. Well, I don't have anything now. No, sorry. Thanks, everyone. And Garrett, I just want to pipe in and say thanks again. I know I started a little bit too soon and forgot, Marlis, forgive me, but Garrett, thanks for all your help and helping facilitate us through all that. Thanks for all the input, and then I just have one brief comment, because a lot of things have been covered, and we did get good concurrence on everything. I just want to revisit goal five, D. So we did get concurrence that we're going to relocate that one to a different section. There was, I just want to confirm, so we talked about combining that with our lease management policy, and there's another goal that, a financial policy. So, object, goal one, objective two, D, establish financial partnership policy, this is, and this was specific to lease, lease sites. John, you, you initiated that, so I just want to, is this something we're looking at holistically amongst lease policy, financial partnership, and then it goes back to this evaluation and audit? And I just, I'm not sure if we're asking for too much, if we're getting spaghetti out of this, or if we want to get, you know, deliver something more specific. So John, I'm looking for you to, to be specific on that.
Sure, and I, Scott and I spoke this morning about it, and, you know, I'm, we're both concerned about not overburdening Eric and his department. However, I'm fine with moving that into this holistic look at the lease sites, how we manage the leases, and my intent when I first brought this up was to involve the finance department in overview and ongoing oversight of the financial aspects of lease management, which could help unburden and assist Eric. And so that's kind of my intent there, and to make sure that our audits are routine from a financial standpoint, so that we're maximizing revenues, and that we're collecting a hundred percent of what we're supposed to collect with regard to our lease sites.
So, so, and that, the auditing was, when you were saying audits, that has, that has to do with the...
There's a five-year audit requirement, I think it's every five years, Eric, in the leases?
Yeah, five years for percent gross revenue auditing.
Making sure that we're doing the audits and, yeah.
So, combining all three of those into, to one, we're looking okay on that?
Yeah. I mean, since we're looking at the whole thing, it makes sense grouping them together.
And, so, and I, I'll, I agree, and I have concerns as well, and we've had, and John, you've articulated very well some of, some of the things that I, I would agree with. The one thing on this, as far as bringing it back, summer, fall, I guess I just want to determine a point where we can bring this back, and, and that's for discussion with Scott, Eric, and council on priorities. This one I would like to see, I envision this would come back to us, we would have discussion on it. It would probably be something we'd have to, have to give some, have some dialogue on, and then it might come back at a second meeting for adoption. So, this one, I just want to be kind of determined, other than summer, fall, and if there's other activity going in Harbor, and I'm looking to Scott and Eric on priorities, I just want to make sure we can bring this back in that timeframe, short of saying, let's bring it back in August and adopt it in September. And I just, I guess I just want feedback from, from you, Scott, on that, and then council on my being so specific or deliberate on that.
Yeah, I'm not fully prepared to say what council meeting it'd be brought back, or necessarily what month. I know Eric is managing quite a bit in this, the overall, the lease management policy will take time to make sure it's done well. So once it's delivered to council, you feel like you can take action, I think that's our goal. But, you know, I can look to Eric and see, I don't know what you think is feasible to bring something back. Would it be late summer, you know?
Summer, certainly begin work on it, you know, into the spring and into summer, and depending how complicated it gets, it's really, you know, as far as the, the auditing, the physical auditing process of the sites, really mostly that is going to entail, in my opinion. The biggest, the biggest part of that for, for staff is going to be follow-up on inspections. The inspections, if we really want to do it thoroughly, we've been doing it in the past with kind of cobbled together different inspections, people that have been available from the fire department, really kind of doing fire safety inspections and not doing commercial real estate inspections. And they've done a great job in what they've been charged with doing, but it's not a full commercial real estate inspection. To do that, we need to hire somebody to come and do it, and develop a report. Following up is going to take some time and energy and staff effort as well. On the financial end, it's really developing a more robust auditing policy and a more defined auditing policy. Rather than just every five years, we put out an RFP for some auditing services and throw it together, we need to come up with a better policy, and that's, I think, will entail Jennifer and her crew and being involved in that, so, developing that over the summertime, and getting it back late summer, fall.
As far as having the audit performed and setting priorities, and sorry to monopolize the conversation on this, I'm expecting we'll get conversations from everybody, but it's making sure that we can have the policy back, whether or not we actually start doing some of those audits within the year. Personally, I'm okay if we see something like that carry over into the next year, but would certainly like to see the policy come before council, you know, this year, and that's why I'm having the extra conversation on, understanding that you're taking on a lot, and just want to understand that if there's other things out there, what the overall priority is of council on, on getting this back into an adopted policy, and that's, you know, that's what I want to drive in this conversation, and just make, be deliberate, and other than that, we can move on, adopt it, and get going.
And I'll just add, since, since we were linked on this and have been working on it, I'm fine with just having the policy come back. I didn't expect that the actual audits would be done, and that all the site audits would happen, et cetera, et cetera.
And I didn't think that was...
Just the policy.
Right. I didn't think that was the anticipation either.
Yeah.
And I would anticipate, and this is probably going farther than I need to, but financial audits, you don't do them all in one year, you just rotate them, a fifth of them every year, and just constantly doing a fifth of them every year, and the physical audits, if it's on a three-year program, you're doing a third of them, and just constantly doing them, rather than taking on the whole mass at once, because that just gets overwhelming.
So I think the discussion is, there's a policy, and then there's the implementation together.
Correct.
Right? I mean, I think those have to come to council together, so you, yeah, we could all agree that a policy of doing every three years is fantastic, but if we can't deliver on that, then we're setting us all up for the same issues we're dealing with, not being able to get our work planned on. So I think that's what Eric is saying, is we need to look at how we can actually implement an enhanced policy, which I think we all want. We all want to be able to deliver that for you, so we have to be creative in looking at how we can achieve that for you, at the same time bringing the policy forward, if that makes sense.
That, that makes a lot of sense, and I, and making up, you know, having written down lease site evaluation audits on a three-year rotating basis, you know, that was arbitrary, you know, you know, can we do, you know, a third of the lease site audits a year? I would expect if that's not something we could do, if it's, to your point, a fifth of, you know, over that, then that's what'll come back to us. The premise is that we, we get something back, and to your point, Scott, we, we say, this is one we can be successful at, and that's all.
Or give you a range of options.
Yeah.
Three-year means, we need to hire somebody. Five-year means, we can do it within our existing resources.
Right, right.
That's what, I think, what Eric was trying to drive at.
Yeah.
Not to say we were going to start auditing the next day.
Yeah.
Yeah, that definitely wasn't my expectation, that all of a sudden we'll start auditing, yeah. We want the policy in place first, and then we'll...
But to be mindful, I just, you know, going back to the original discussion, is, you know, summer, fall is what we have on there, I just, I'm...
You're looking for specificity.
I'm just reiterating that I would like to, you know, to see that, and that's, that's, yeah, that's my point and discussion.
So, I agree.
Okay. Anything else? Everybody else is good? So do we need to revisit some of the discussion points, or where are we at on that?
I can go through it real quick, if you get ahead now, to make sure I'm not missing anything. The, the first modification is under goal one, objective two B, which is evaluate the MOU with Chamber, and it said, we changed it to evaluate the MOU with Chamber and other arrangements to further the economic development objectives. Within that same objective, item D is the establish a financial partnership criterion policy, and then adding the lease site and audits, evaluation, putting that together into one. Objective three within goal one is the tourism, which, in addition to looking at the VR, RV assessment issue, it's also kind of an evaluation of the overall tourism effort. So looking at how that transition has been, hotelier involvement, board functionality, adherence to the resolution. I think there's a resolution on an ordinance, is there an ordinance? Maybe I, I just know the REZO, REZO, which is kind of the charter for, for T-Bid being part of the city, and then the financial report, which we're actually delivering on Thursday of this week for the annual stakeholder, which we'll update if there is new information, and then partnership with Slocow. If there's anything else, please let me know now. Okay, good, all right. I think everything is good on goal two. Goal three, the overall goal was changed to public infrastructure and facility maintenance and improvement. And is that singular or plural? Is it improvements or improvement?
It's improvements.
Which one?
I see improvement.
Singular?
Two-potato, three-potato. Yeah, yeah.
All right.
All right.
English major.
All right. So we're good.
Okay. And then, oh yes, and then we moved down to goal five, we moved the feasibility study, CCE, to goal one. We'll find a nice home for that there, and then we also moved the lease site, combined that with the financial partnership criterion policy. Did I miss anything else? I know we added to simmer, or we added the TOT incentive program review.
On simmer?
To the simmer.
Mm-hmm.
That was, I think that...
You missed the, I'm going to find it now, the Dynegy site issue, moving that up to, I think it's in refrigerator now, it's simmer.
Okay.
Because we're on an ongoing basis, yeah.
So I think it's, it's under simmer, do you want to leave it simmer?
It's under simmer?
Yeah, I think we did want it on simmer.
Leave it there.
Let me see.
Because simmer does mean we could do work on it, it just falls below the other.
Okay, let me see, under street. See, which number is it under?
It's under goal one, item A, which is pursue opportunities and relationships for...
Oh, yes. Sorry.
Okay.
Just couldn't find it.
It's all right.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes.
Yep? We're good to go?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments? Everybody's good? Okay. I don't think we need to make a motion or anything on this, so when this, this will come back on consent? Is that right, with, with the final goals and objectives?
We can do that for you, if you want to provide that direction, we can bring it back, once it's made pretty, if you will, in a more public-facing document, and a calendar, which will go more from a spreadsheet into something that's visual.
Yeah, I mean, any thoughts or comments from council? I mean, we can bring it back during one of the budget discussions and say, hey, that we're talking about our budget, and these are the goals that we set up, if that works.
Okay.
Any, any preference?
Really up to staff in terms of your timing and when you'd like to bring it back.
Yeah, budget would be fine, if we get it back sooner, we'll do that.
No, I think the budget will be fine.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Okay. With that, do we want to take a little recess, and then we can come back to item C two?
Sure.
Okay, great, we'll take a recess. Thank you. Any preference?
Really up to staff in terms of your timing and when you'd like to bring it back.
Yeah, budget would be fine. If we get back sooner, we'll do that.
No, I think the budget will be fine.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Okay. With that, do we want to take a little recess and then we can come back to Item C2?
Sure.
Okay, great. We'll take a recess. Thank you. Ready to go. All right, welcome back, everyone. Our next item on the agenda, Item C2, is the Fiscal Year 2017-18 Midyear Budget Performance and Status Report, six months, ending December 31st. And we're looking for our Finance Director, Jen Callaway.
Hello, good evening.
Hello.
Thank you. So tonight is the midyear status update, and this is really, you know, I'm going to do the talking, but this is really a collaboration of everybody that you see here. It's bringing all the departments together and updating, you know, where they are at budget and being able to present this to you tonight. So your directors are all here, Kirk and Jen are here in the audience if you have specific questions on tourism or recreation, and feel free to stop throughout. Also, Rob's going to take over and do a CIP update for the council as well. So you'll try to get a comprehensive look here at all of your funds and where they stand at midyear. So our first, I passed out my presentation slides for the council, the staff, and there's some in the back for anybody remaining. The first, we're going to talk about general fund revenues. Our TOT is, we're recommending to reduce that by $200,000. That's to align with how we're trending. We're at almost exactly the same point as we were midyear last year, and the budget was about $200,000 higher. It anticipated a 5% growth rate. So we need to readjust that back to where we see that will end the year, which is a $200,000 reduction. Our next revenue adjustment is charges for service. This is a budget augmentation or budget increase for the category of $544,000. This includes $390,000 in reimbursements for the mutual aid for the fire support down in Montecito and the landslide. It also includes increased planning and inspection fees. Fire Marshal Matt is doing more fire inspection fees. Sorry, I can't say his last name, so that's easier. Fire inspections fees, so there's a $70,000 increase for that. And then community development is seeing an increase in the number of building applications that come in or, you know, renovations. So we've made an increase for both community development and fire inspection fees. Also, a small adjustment for encroachment permits, and then a $25,000 adjustment to account for pool revenues that we received or expect to receive through the end of the year based on how we're trending so far. So all of that totals up to $544,000. There's detail that's provided in the staff report, and it's in the attachment to the staff report, but it's on page 19, and it's sorted out, sorry, page 51 of the agenda packet. It's sorted by categories. The last adjustment is for business tax, and this we talked about before as well. It's bringing back down the business tax budget number to what we expect to receive based on trends and knowing that the auditing services that were employed haven't returned as much as we expected. So that's kind of trueing up from the conversation we had at first quarter. So our total revenue increases are just under $174,000 for the year. I think I covered most everything on this slide. I just wanted to also point out that there's other key revenues that we're going to have to continue to watch, one of those being rental income. And I told you in the first quarter report that generally we wouldn't do a third quarter report, given that we're in budget and timing. Because of what we're finding at midyear, we will do a third quarter report. And some of these other revenue categories, we're going to kind of watch really closely as they weren't trending below, but there were some key things that we weren't quite sure we're going to come in, so that might come up at third quarter, and I just wanted to be transparent about that. But again, at this point, we're feel comfortable, we're going to get, we're going to achieve the revenues that are budgeted. General fund expenditures, salary and benefit increase of $189,000. There's about $253,000 in fire personnel costs. That's all directly related to the mutual aid support. We get reimbursed for the overtime and to backfill the shifts for the crew that's deployed. We've, at this point today, received about 300 of that, $300,000 of that being, has been reimbursed, so we have about another $100,000 outstanding. Offsetting that $253,000 of already incurred overtime is reduction from the deputy city manager position. We're not filling that throughout the rest of the year. We don't plan to fill that in future years due to budget constraints. So that's about a $70,000 savings in personnel costs. And we've also reduced most of the budget within that department, as it's just being absorbed through the city manager's office, the clerk's department, HR department, community development. I think everybody's kind of taking a piece, so that offsets that $253,000 increase primarily. Those are the two big differences. Supplies and materials, there's a budget increase of just under $13,000. Some of this is related to some charges at the rec center that we used to receive free food for the childcare youth program from the food bank. We don't receive that anymore. Overall, pretty small amount. And we'll revisit this again at third quarter, is we'll have a better sense of what we can absorb with an existing budget and maybe reduce some of these going back. So total expenditure reductions are $192,447, and that's our recommendation. The only other one I didn't mention was the transfers in. There's a recommendation of adjusting the T-Bid transfer, reducing that by $9,500, and that's to true up from the prior year actual receipts. And we went over that during our study session, but again, that's a $60,000 base plus 20% of any actual TOT receipts over $3 million. So we've gone back and looked at fiscal year 1670 actuals, and our transfer in was just about $10,000 too much. We'll bring that money back to the general fund. Based on these recommendations, we would forecast today to end the year at about $10,000 of expenditures over revenues. That's why we will complete a third quarter report and come back with more up-to-date information. Six months is, you know, a reasonable period to make assumptions on, but when you get into having nine months of data, we can really kind of fine-tune that and give you a better number. So we're committed to doing that. And then if we move on to some of the enterprise funds, those are discussed on page 56, 55 and 56 of the attachment of your council packet. This is included, it was not included in the first quarter report, so we're continuing to kind of refine these reports and give you more information, and that'll be, you know, an ongoing process for the next year or so. Revenue increases for harbor total $18,000. Expenditure increases total $15,000. The revenue increases are really to align with where we're trending. As of the sixth, for six months, expenditure increases the same thing. The only thing I would note on that is there's an increase to utility costs, and that's due to some PG&E expenses that we had been gifted in the past. There was a meter that wasn't registered, and PG&E now knows about it. That's why that was off so much, it's a $9,000 adjustment. For the water, water fund, and let me clarify that these funds are the revenue funds only, so we're not looking at the equipment replacement or capital replacement funds at this time. These are just strictly the revenue funds. It was pointed out by a member of the community, and he was correct, that there was a double counting of our transfer into the utility discount program. It was budgeted in both the revenue, water revenue fund and the water accumulation fund. So this just cleans that up and makes it a one-time transfer into that program from the water enterprise funds as a whole. And then the sewer recommendation is to kind of clean up our prior conversation on the reporting and what was double counted in that fund when we spoke in November about that. So this is just a cleanup of the capital projects that were double counted in the two different funds. So that recommendation is $1.9 million. When we look at our T-Bid, our Morro Bay Tourism Business Improvement District, the revenues are trending low, that directly coincides with our TOT. So that's to be expected. The T-Bid operates a little bit differently in that a lot of their expenditures are contractual based, so if they've already entered into a contract, it's hard for them to pull those expenditures back. So we haven't made any formal recommendations other than the reduction in transfer in that we talked about, the $9,500. But we know that we need, anything that's not committed at this point, we're kind of holding off on and watching to see if TOT comes back up by chance or not. So there was some, about $38,000 that was expected to be year-end excess that could be a transfer to an accumulation fund, so there is a little bit of room to absorb some funds there. But in case you were wondering why there is no official recommendation for a budget adjustment, that's your answer. For Measure Q, this was discussed with the CFAC committee, just as the majority of the rest of these recommendations were, and they were all approved from the CFAC committee to the council, so I wanted to mention that. But the Measure Q budget included an allocation of $77,000 for SRO services. We aren't providing those services due to lack of participation from the school, so that $77,000 remains unappropriated, if you will. We wouldn't spend that money on something other than you approved it for. It was only approved for SRO services, so we look at that as just kind of frozen until we get direct authority from council to spend it on something else. The fire department has some equipment needs. The reimbursement that comes in for the mutual aid support offsets staffing, offsets administrative costs, and is meant to offset equipment usage. In the past, that mutual aid support has been used to help balance the general fund, from what I understand, and that's essentially what we're doing this year as well. But this recommendation to reappropriate the SRO money is to help purchase some of that equipment that the fire department needs, because that would be a valid Measure Q expenditure, and this is money that's essentially frozen for the SRO purposes. I want to be really clear and to the council and the community, is this is what was messaged to the fire and the police department. This is by no means setting a precedent for next year's spending. We're not recommending that, you know, the police department doesn't receive funding through Measure Q. This is really a mitigation method for this year, and we'll kind of go back to baseline for Measure Q next year and come up with an appropriate recommendation that includes discussion with both fire and police. So I just want to make that really clear, that this really is a one-time kind of mitigation effort on our part. So the fire equipment request totals $65,000, so there's still, you know, about $12,000 of unappropriated money that would either come out at year-end as fund balance or be available for the CFAC committee to recommend use on streets or something else that's appropriate to Measure Q. And then the last adjustments that we have outlined in the report are these other funds, if you will. The adjustment to risk management for the $15,000 was discussed at the last council meeting. That's for legal costs associated with the Diablo closure. And then the adjustment of up to $40,000, that would be to fund the county-wide economic study that was also discussed at the last council meeting. You'll see that that says opportunity fund. I just want to take a minute and talk about that a little bit. There is an opportunity fund that is outside of the general fund. It has about $48,500 in it. There isn't any appropriation of that money at this point.
Did you say 48?
Yes.
Thank you.
Forty-eight thousand, five hundred.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. There is no authority to appropriate that money in the budget, from what we've seen. So this was, seemed like an appropriate place to pull the money from to fund that study. Should the council choose to go forward with it? Regardless of if you choose to or not, we'll have another conversation about what would you like to do with the money in that fund. It wasn't included in the budget book, so I think it's an appropriate conversation to have. Do you want to, you know, transfer it into a facilities maintenance fund or equipment fund? Do you want to hold it for a project going forward, just to get some direction on that? And maybe that'll come up, I think, appropriately during budget conversation, because we'll know what fund balance is at that point. Staff also worked closely on doing some adjustments for the Wharf project. The budget for the Wharf project was over $4 million. As of December 31st, it was 13% expense, so $575,000. It's really not practical to be able to spend all $4 million, so we wanted to make some effort at adjusting the budget to a more realistic number for the rest of the year. So there's an adjustment of $2 million for the whole Wharf project that's recommended. I'm going to turn it over to Rob.
Thank you. And this is, I think, a unique opportunity for me. This is the first time in my tenure where we've actually done a CIP update as part of midyear or as part of anything. Just want to point out, on the Wharf Capital Project, the adjustment of $2 million is not a particularly good thing. It's a cost deferment. It's money that will still need to be spent. It was not a cost savings. It was due to project delays to investigate options. The capital improvement management plan, there's a mix of funding sources for that project. Measure Q, our USHA Urban State Highways Account Grant, this is administered through SLOCOG. We got about $61,000 through SB1 for this first partial year, and a small CAL recycle grant for use of rubberized material. The work for that project is substantially complete. We're still verifying quantities with our CM, Construction Manager. There's an estimated CM fee of $44,000, estimated construction amount of $808,000, a change order for additional Delmar parking lot paving of $3,420, but we expect to finish up the project with a balance of about $74,500 compared to what was budgeted. Just want to point out, the paving for the Delmar parking lot was not paid for out of the Measure Q funds. It was paid for out of facility maintenance funding that was previously budgeted. We also did some sidewalk work in town. It's another mix of funding sources. The major source of that funding was through the Community Development Block Grant Program. We were able to get well over $200,000 from Atascadero's inability to perform with CDBG. Unfortunately, we need to pay that back to CDBG. It was just an advance, so it's not free money. The other funding source for the sidewalk gap closures was our development impact fees. It is also substantially complete. We're again verifying quantities. We have some design fees, about $30,665. Estimated construction amount, including changes, is... Estimated construction amount, including changes, is $312,484. And those change orders were due to additional paving on Main Street. Due to, when we originally put the project out to bid, we did it without any topo survey and found some grade busts that we had to account for, extended the paving, and extended some paving to make driveways match up also. So it was some additional paving that we did not anticipate at the time. So likely when we close out that project, we may need to use some of that Measure Q savings to reimburse this project. But once we get the quantities verified, we'll have a more precise number. Slide on the Delmar restroom. We had planned, in some outer budget year, to replace the restroom completely, about $350,000 to do that. A community group came forward, wanted to volunteer on a "construction," that was air quotes for people that didn't see that, "construction type" project. So we worked with this volunteer group. We're going to remove the siding to see how bad it was, see if we could just re-site it and move on from there. Once we removed the siding, the framing was all rotted. It became a demolition project for them. We worked with our existing staff and the budget from the facilities maintenance account and also our ADA, because we, as we were putting this back together, we needed to supply an ADA accessible stall. That project, instead of spending $350,000, we spent about $24,000 to date on that project with a total estimated expenditure of about $40,000 to complete that. Like I said, the original restroom was estimated at $350,000 for the site work and the prefab restroom. We expect about 20 years of life out of this service, because we have rehabilitated the entire restroom facility, everything above grade. We used the existing concrete slab, but it was a rather radical repair and maintenance project once we got into it. We have some other CIPs that, most of these are either in progress or re-study. Many of our water and sewer projects are being reevaluated through the One Water Plan, the capital facilities portion that I talked about earlier. For example, the Nutmeg Water Storage Tank, we don't want to build a million gallon water storage tank if we need a 750,000 or a million and a half gallon. So that's being based on the modeled fire flows up there. Do want to point out that we continue to work on the 141 interchange improvements. We have money allocated through SLOCOG and Caltrans, and it's, our consultant is working on the preliminary design, and the environmental review is being prepared. There are a few projects that have not started due to limited staff resources, but we do expect to get to the water storage tank exterior coating, perhaps near the end of The, I guess the next one would be in the harbor section, the South Tier Pier renovations. And it's less of a capital project than it is a major maintenance project. But based on a conversation with the harbor director, those improvements are not essential improvements at this time. No structural failures have occurred, and there's no safe, life safety issues at the current time. I think I breezed through the CIP and maybe pause here in case there's any questions on that.
You want to go through any questions? Red?
Yeah, Rob, the Highway 141 interchange improvement. We're proceeding with PAED. Do we have assurance that construction money is going to be available?
We have assurance from, that outside construction money is available if we can come up with our share of the, which is approximately 50%. The latest estimates for that improvements are $8 million, so we would need to come up with about $4 million. We're going to have a meeting here in a couple days with our SLOCOG representatives to discuss this project, and we have enough money to complete design. We don't have enough money to bring us through construction. The premise that we've been working on thus far is, much of the, this is based on advice of a former Caltrans district director. Many times, projects drop out of the queue because they're not ready to proceed. It's almost impossible to get construction funding if you don't have a design completed and you're ready to go. So that's why we've been pressing forward with PAED and moving into design. But we're going to have a conversation with our SLOCOG partners this week to see if they support that logic.
Good. Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions, Ben?
Yeah. Rob, we were just talking about on page 20, the water storage tank exterior coating. Are we talking Nutmeg?
We wouldn't recode Nutmeg. It's far beyond recoding. It's our other tanks, the King's tanks. We did-
And Dawson Street, or just only King's?
King's.
Not Dawson. What is it?
Now you've made that name-
I'm sorry.
...leave my brain.
I was thinking Dawson Street.
Yeah, it's up near there.
No, it's the next street up.
Not Elena.
No.
Elena's likely to go away with the Nutmeg tank. It's the Blanca tanks at the north end of town.
That's a Blanca.
So all those would be assessed and coded as necessary.
Okay. And then also, in terms of the Choro Creek stream gauges, and those are part of the One Water Plan, are we still assessing that, or are those going to be being put into place?
That's still an assessment that's going on. It's probably about a quarter million dollars in improvements to put in those stream gauges, and it will be difficult permitting. NIMF does not like stream gauges on steelhead streams, so they have a particular design in mind that doesn't meet our needs for stream gauging. We need a very controlled cross-section to measure the flow accuracy, because we're concerned about the very lowest of the flows, because that's when we're constrained about using Choro. The improvements that they would prefer have a less controlled section, but it's probably better for the fish. But it doesn't allow us to measure as accurately. So before we spend a bunch of consulting time and environmental study time, I want to be assured that that is really a viable water source for our future, and we'll be discussing that through the One Water Plan before we spend any more money on Choro stream gauge construction.
Okay. Thank you. That's all my questions. John?
Yeah. Rob, page 18, just kudos to your group. I'm wondering, were you able to save like almost $280,000 bucks because of the volunteer assistance or combination of the type of project you did? I mean, it's a tremendously decreased cost, and we'd like to see that duplicated across the city.
I think it was prompted by the volunteers. It became a much bigger project than they were ready for, once we, it was demolished. So we'll re-engage the volunteer, Rock Harbor is the group. So we'll get back with Pastor Randy and find an appropriate time where we can re-engage them, probably after stuccoing, and we can do some painting and trim work out there.
Good. Partnership.
Marla?
Yeah. Well, I had asked many questions in advance and received great answers. So my only question about this had to do with whether or not the improvements that were made there were going to last, and you've answered it in the staff report, that the, for $40,000, you've built a new restroom that's going to last maybe 20 years. So that's fabulous.
Okay. Great. So, Rob-
Yeah. Just want to add about that. I wouldn't expect that to be the case with every project that we do. It just was a matter of circumstances. It has taken our staff a lot of work to do that. They very much enjoy doing that work.
Yeah.
It'll be a great asset to the park. That restroom gets a lot of use with our, you know, pickleball courts up there, tennis, the dog park. So it's a very active restroom.
It is a very active park.
And it was in terrible condition. So, yes, thank you.
Rob, the stream gauges that you were talking about, that particular one being evaluated by One Water, was there not some other requirement that, besides the One Water Plan, that we were required to install those?
Yes. To, we have a permit to use water out of the flowing underground stream of Choro Creek. That can't go to right until we meet all those permit requirements. One of those permit requirements is the installation of gauging so that we can be able to determine when that flow is less than 1.4 CFS. There are some particular problems with Choro Creek, using Choro Creek water, it's also high in nitrates. I think we need to consider it carefully, because it is a rather large water right. It used to make up almost the entire water supply for Morro Bay. But there may be other options that we should look at through the One Water Planning effort as equally as viable to Choro Creek. I just want to make sure that, you know, we'll be done with the One Water Planning effort, and we'll be bringing back to PWA and council this water supply evaluation in the near term, but we'll be done with this in August. I don't think it, it's a delay, but I think it's a necessary delay to confirm that that gauging is necessary for, if the water supply is going to be ultimately used for Morro Bay.
Okay. And some of the other items that were on the CIP budget document that we approved, how does, how do the rest of those items pan out?
So many of those weren't approved for this current year. They were outer years with no funding. They're mainly general fund.
The cost was allocated.
The cost was not allocated. For example, the Surf Street stairs over here.
Yeah.
Very expensive project. We have-
Could be the next church project, though.
Could be. Unfortunately, we need to do something besides stairs there. We need to be able to accommodate all users when we put something like that back in. So we do have, you know, the ADA requirements there also. So that was an unfunded project. There was, you know, many of our other general fund projects were unfunded.
There's, sorry, didn't get to, we didn't get a chance to talk about some of these, some of the stairways like Olive and stuff like that. There were RFPs issued on some of that stuff at the beginning of the budget, but I haven't seen much movement on that. So is that, was that not part of that?
The Olive Street stairs and the-
The handrails.
And were handrails, fairly minor improvement, so we don't need to, the thing with the Surf Street stairs, we would take those down completely. There's really not a whole lot to save there. Where the other stairs, either nature has been kinder to them, or they were built better originally, but they're very well-used, as you can see by the handrail deterioration. And we need to get those handrails. We've had a little bit of an issue with local fabrication of handrails, and we've gone over the hill to a welding shop, basically, to get those handrails fabricated. So we should see handrails there shortly.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Okay. Next, next on the, want to move on to the next part of this, then?
Just to kind of continue with the capital project, there is a recommendation, Recommendation C, to establish a capital pavement management plan. And really what that is, is from our accounting side of things, to put all of money and revenues and expenditures for that capital pavement plan into one project code. I think it's going to be helpful when we go to report out for SB1 and the use of that funding. It also feels a little uncomfortable to put grant money into the Measure Q fund, which is what we've been doing in the past with the CAL recycle grant. The CFAC committee was okay with that. We committed to providing them with the same level of detail for that project management pavement plan that we do for the Measure Q reports. So it'll still be transparent as to what the Measure Q money was used for, but it will be helpful from a reporting standpoint. And I think from a council and community standpoint, you'll be able to see how much is exactly spent on pavement management. So that's the recommendation for item C. Before I get into the KELPERS, I just wanted to add that there is not a resolution attached to the staff report. It's a different practice than I'm used to, and it was my bad, I forgot to include that. So if there's any adjustments or changes that you would like to make, we'll incorporate those and bring the resolution back as a consent item at the next meeting to kind of do the formal adoption. So there's no kind of other questions on the mid-year. I know I had a chance to meet with many of you and answer some of those questions beforehand. So we'll talk about the KELPERS side fund prepayment. This is kind of one of those things that, the question came up in the study session, what are you doing, or how often do we need to look at this? And I said, we're pretty much engaged with this weekly and on an ongoing basis. So there's, of our three plans, fire, safety, safety, fire, police, and miscellaneous, the Tier One Fire Fund has a side fund still outstanding. The side fund is a debt that was assigned based on the fact that we're in a pool for the fire plan, which means we have less than 100 members in the plan. KELPERS did this back in 2012-ish for all of the smaller plans. They pooled them to help kind of mitigate the risk, right? So you spread it across the larger pool, same with the reward. When the, with the liabilities that were outstanding, that then got spread across the pool, and each member in the pool was assigned these side funds. We paid off the police one this year, and that's where we are going to see a reduction in our rate for police next year. We have two years left on the fire fund, it's, the fire side fund, it's $308,000. If we pay that off by March 1st, we can pay off $301,000. So you realize about $7,000 in savings. It's a little bit of an offset, because we'll lose some interest earnings on, you know, the money that we have in our investments. But KELPERS is charging us, you know, seven and a half to 7.37%, depending on the year it adjusts with the discount rate. So we earn one to one and a half percent. So it seems to make sense, even though $7,000 isn't a large amount. Every little bit helps. So we brought that recommendation forward to you. The funding source would have to be from general fund emergency reserves. The council did plan for future economic issues, and so the emergency reserve policy requires a 1718 balance of $2.68 million. You have approximately $3.5 million in there at this point. So payment of the $300,000 would still keep you within that minimum level that you approved. So that was, you know, great foresight on the council, and now we have a chance to kind of utilize some of that excess, if you will, and make those payments. So if there's any questions on the side fund in particular, or the overall mid-year report, we're all here to answer those.
All right, Jen. Thanks very much. And Rob, thanks for the CIP update for a first time.
First time.
All right. Good. Thanks. So I don't have any speaker slips for this item. I'm looking out in the audience and looking for any public comments. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. And we'll start off with questions, I suppose. Usually we do questions and then public- Usually we do questions and then public comment, but look for questions. Marlos, you want to start off on questions?
Well, as I said, I submitted an extensive list of questions and got them all answered. So, I just maybe want to just clarify a couple of points, just for anybody who may have read the report. I had noted in the water revenue fund, there was a transfer out to the utility discount program. And I just wanted to clarify that that did not come from the user rates. And you did clarify that. But just in case there's anybody out there that also read the staff report and noticed that, could you just explain that one?
Sure. The user utility discount program is funded through penalties, through both the water and sewer funds, so they're not user rates per se, which we wouldn't be allowed to use to fund that program. It's all, it's the penalties that we collect.
Right. And then, I also had a question on the, your recommendation is that even though the fire equipment is being reimbursed, correct, from CAL FIRE or FEMA, you're suggesting that instead of putting that money in the general fund, we take the money to buy that equipment out of Measure Q? And I wanted to just verify that that was legal, that there are no restrictions on the reimbursement monies that you get.
Correct. It's, when they do their reimbursement, there's a defined amount for the overtime for the crew. There's a 20% admin piece that we're reimbursed for. You know, our administrative support with the fire department works a set number of hours, so it's not that she had to work beyond that, but we get some compensation for the hours that she spent. That would be appropriate to use in the general fund. And then there's a kind of equipment piece of that. So, if we were in a balanced budget year, we would say $65,000 should go into the fire department's equipment replacement fund for the wear and tear on the vehicles that they took down there. We're not in that situation. So, instead of that, we've said, the fire department has this list of needs of equipment. We can fund that in Measure Q, there's some money available that seems appropriate for this year. But it's legal, there's no restrictions on doing that.
So, they don't care? I mean, they, they don't check, they don't...
What's your, I don't understand your point.
Well, the money did not go, there, the money did not go back into the, well, it went back into the general fund, but now we're using Measure Q monies instead of the reimbursement monies. And I just wanted to make sure that that was legal, that there was no restriction on the money that we get reimbursed for the wear and tear in our equipment, and for some of the equipment that was used, actually, because tents and whatnot were some of the equipment. But it's now coming out of Measure Q, not the general fund where the reimbursement money went. I just wanted to make sure that there was no restrictions on that reimbursement money as to, it had to go for the equipment. That's all.
You know, by California state law, all reimbursements from FEMA and Cal OES has to go in the general fund, and there's no earmarking or no restrictions on what that money can be used for.
Okay, that's what I wanted to verify. Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Good, thank you. Thanks, Jen. Thanks also for the written report, very comprehensive, as was the first quarter, and the didactic write-up was very helpful. So, thank you for that, and the presentation also further clarified it. Again, I want to ask a ton of questions because you did a very nice job of coalescing everybody's questions and sending them to us in an email, answering them, so that we could have common knowledge, and that saved a lot of time. The one area that I have a question on that remains is page 11 or 43 of 93 on the quarterly budget report, second quarter 2017-18. Licenses and permits at the top, under analysis, again, that's page 43 of 93 of our packet. I'm trying to wrap my head around the issue with regard to business tax, which is the largest subset of this category of licenses and permits. And my question really is this. I know we engaged MAS to do the audit a couple of years ago, and the issue for me is it, is trying to understand, is this a budgeting issue where we over-budgeted this category? And/or, I'm reading here that we're not currently citing businesses who do not respond to MAS. In other words, if MAS and their process having a business in town, one could get up to five letters saying, you know, we're asking for information. If you don't comply and answer, you know, you could be cited or what have you. But it says we're not doing that. And I guess my question is, if I just ignore them, do I not have to pay my business license? Or is that what's happened here? I'm trying to get my head around it, so.
So, it is a budgeting issue. The budget number doesn't align with our actuals. And the reason for that is when we engaged with MAS, we, you would naturally expect as you start to audit, you get more businesses in our system, so this will create this ongoing, you know, renewal for those businesses, in addition to whatever late fees or penalties they might have to pay from not being in the system, unless there was an amnesty program in effect. We had an opportunity to meet with MAS at the end of last year, I believe, last calendar year. Their process is to send out letters, and they identify businesses based on sales tax reporting, et cetera, that may need a business license and are not in our system. And they initiate by sending a letter saying, please give us a call. They send a second letter, that's a little bit more, you need to call us, you know, a third, a fourth, and they kind of ramp up the language in those letters to an estimated amount that you could possibly owe us this. And this is, you know, they come up with the maximum number they think that they could, that the business could owe the city. Some cities are responsive to those, some are not.
Some businesses?
Businesses, yes, sorry. Some are not. And based on the discussion we had with MAS, there had been a lack of administrative citation on behalf of the city, and whether that was, I know MAS was, the concept of MAS and their approach was not widely received well. So, whether that direction came from the fact that there was a lot of backlash, or it was a matter of practice, but no, we're not, we're not citing people at this point. If they don't pay, unfortunately, you know, they're not, they're not getting a site. But I will say that the finance department staff and city staff are making improvements as to how we are tracking business license and what different databases we can kind of align with and see if they're applying for a planning permit or something over in Scott's Department. You know, they're really good about sending them over and making sure we have a business license on file with them. And that collaboration is improving. And from a practical standpoint, I think from, for the city, we could effectively do the same type of audit and maybe be more effective. We could do the same type of audit and be more effective, I think, with the messaging and how our approach is. But I don't know if we need citations at this point.
Well, I guess I was just looking for accountability and equity across the board for businesses that do comply and pay their business license fees. And then, if it, and I'm not daylighting this to see this happen in the city, but, but if businesses are not paying their business license and not complying with their response, that we do have a mechanism to hold them accountable to make sure that we collect the revenue, because it's the right thing to do. And so, I just want to be assured that maybe in the future, we're, we're going to be doing that, and we have a mechanism in place to do it.
Absolutely.
Great. Okay, thanks, appreciate it.
Matt?
Sure. Yes, Jen, I have a question in terms of your presentation, page 27. I realize you talk about this at a different, a couple of different sites, but in terms of the side fund prepayment, perhaps you could give me a little bit of background. In terms of side fund payments, do side fund payments happen yearly? Do they happen on a cycle? Do they happen with certain sets of employees?
Sure. So, side funds are assigned to a classification or a plan. So, we had one for fire and we had one for police. You have a pooled plan for miscellaneous as well, but there wasn't a side fund in the current actuarial report. So, it was either paid off, or they allocated that one differently. But police was paid off this year, and, and how you get a side fund is based on the number of active members. So, we had 100 or less, we got put in this pool. Everybody in the pool is assigned a side fund, and that's your share of the liability. The side funds were five to seven years in duration, and obviously, they kind of were spread because we paid police already, and we still have fire outstanding. You pay, kind of, it's a mortgage payment essentially, so you pay principal and interest every year until it's paid off. We're prepaying the principal, and we're saving on mortgage if this is approved tonight. So, does that answer your question?
That does. And so, for that period of time, we were trying to pay off that side fund for that period of time that it was acquired or arranged with that group, with that group being given our employees. Will we then, as we move into another phase of funding for that fund, will we be perhaps in the future incurring another side fund debt?
So, the difference with the side funds, we have the side funds, and then we have UALs. The UALs are unfunded accrued liability. A lot of agencies paid off their side funds because it truly is like a mortgage. You pay it off, it doesn't come back. The UALs adjust based on the market returns. So, we may come forward to you and suggest we make extra payments on our UAL, or we do a fresh start on the UALs. Those could go up or down because of the investment returns. So, once we pay the side fund off, it will be done, unless in the future, they have to reassign new side funds because of losses, but this one won't come back.
Okay, I think your last sentence covered it, just in case, in terms of the group having losses, needing to have another one. Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Thanks, Matt. Red?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, with that, we can go into any discussion. I think you were asking for direction on $48,000, Jen, and the side fund payment, and I think that might be the discussion and direction you want to hear from us. Is that correct?
The side fund payment, most definitely, because that number is contingent on a March 1st payment, so that will have to happen like tomorrow. The $48,000, if you approve the recommendation to use that money to fund the economic study, up to $40,000, I would suggest we hold off on the balance discussion until we get a better number for the economic study. And then, you know, during the budget development workshops and development process, we'll come back with a more refined number, and then a discussion of what would you like to do with that money.
And one, sorry, one quick question. So, to, in part of the report, I was anticipating that projections might be somewhere around $10,000 in deficit in the path we're going right now. So, would there not be some recommendation on foregoing a project or some other purchase or expenditure in that anticipation?
If that had been a larger number, we would have had that conversation. $10,000 at mid-year is not out of the realm of possibility that we're going to come in under our budget with some of the supplies and materials, and maybe contracts that are outstanding still. And that's exactly why we're saying we'll do a third quarter report, is we'll have a better number at that point. And then have three months to mitigate whatever that number is if it's, if it's still a deficit.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay, with that, open up for discussion on the side fund balance. And Jen, your recommendation is to go ahead and move forward on that with, using the General Fund Emergency Reserve that was pre-planned by resolution to have the excess balance that we have, and still maintain the minimum $2.6 million in there.
That's correct.
Okay. Any discussion on that? No, let's start with Marlos.
I would certainly agree with the recommendation. It makes sense. If we can save $7,000, let's do it. And it's...
It's something we have to pay anyway.
Yes, we have to pay it anyway, so I'm in favor.
Okay, John?
Yeah, I'm in favor. Instead of, you know, getting a percent to a percent and a half interest on that money, we can have an offset of 7.5% cost, absolutely makes sense. $7,000 saved, the $7,000 earned, I support it. Great thought on your part. Thanks for bringing it forward. Be interested in looking at irrevocable trusts in the future to look at some funding opportunities also, just as a side note.
Matt?
Yes, Jen, in terms of the emergency fund, how much money we have in it? We need, we'd like to keep 2.6, and what did you say? We had 3.4 million in there right now?
3.5.
3.5, okay. And each year, right now, we're keeping it, we voted to keep it at 2.6. Are we putting in additional monies each year that if we use 300,000, that we're going to be putting additionals in there?
So, what would go into it is if we end the year with excess revenues over expenditures, it will flow into that emergency reserve, unless you direct it at year-end to go into a capital projects fund or something like that.
Okay, no, I also like the idea of saving a little bit of money, and then also releasing ourselves from the idea of the side fund debt. Okay, I'm for it.
Red?
Yes.
That was easy. So, we have a 5-0 consensus, or a support on the side, side fund, I'd support that as well. And your recommendation to hold off on the $48,000, I would support that recommendation, and pleased to hear the, thinking cautiously about a third quarter review as well, just to be proactive. Any other comments?
I just think we need to probably say we accept all of the staff's recommendations for the proposed changes to the budget, which there are a number of them. Do we not need to do that?
Certainly, I just wanted to make sure that those were two items that I was just taking notes on, that you wanted feedback on, and I was trying to help, help get, be with that.
Well, I was prepared to address the larger issue because this was part of it, but I certainly, I support all of the recommendations.
Okay. Any other discussions, then? No? Did you, yeah?
Well, I think you also would like a recommendation on establishment of a capital management plan project.
Yes.
So, I'm wondering if we should make separate motions on each one of these? Okay, I'll start by saying I move that we receive that fiscal year 2017-18 mid-year budget performance and status report, and authorize the budget adjustments as recommended by staff.
Second? That was a second by Matt, I think he got that. So, motion, so Marlos made the motion as in the staff report on recommendation A, second by Matt. Any further discussion? None? All in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? None? Motion curious, 5-0. And so, that was recommendation A. Did you want to just keep going?
I will keep going. I, I move that we receive the fiscal year 2017-18 capital improvement plan mid-year update.
Second? Motion by Marlos, a second by Red? And any further discussion? None? All in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? None? Motion curious, 5-0. This is a new way we've done it before?
All right.
Okay, yeah.
Then I will move that we authorize the establishment of a capital pavement management plan project to capture all pavement management work.
Second? A motion by Marlos, second by John. Discussion? None? All in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? None? Motion curious, 5-0.
And finally, I move that we direct staff to make the prepayment of the city's safety Tier One Fire Kelpers side fund, utilizing the city's General Fund Emergency Reserve as a funding source.
Second? We have a motion and a second motion by Marlos, second by Red, and that was recommendation D, as laid out in our staff report. Yep. Any further discussion? None? All in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. Are there any other motions or directions to be? No? We all okay with that? You're all good? Don't want any more motions?
I wanted to, Mr. Mayor, thank the CFAC committee for their work. They spent their time reviewing this as well and affirming these recommendations. And so thanks, CFAC. If you're watching, listening, or if you ever hear this, we appreciate the work that you've done and thank you for your oversight.
Thanks for making those comments on our behalf, John. All right. Yep. And with that, we can move on to our final item, C3. Discussion of agenda for CMAK annual Washington Week meetings in Washington DC and adoption of resolution number 0718, protecting our ocean and coast off from offshore oil drilling, exploration, and fracking. Eric?
Where's everybody going? Thank you and good evening. As you know, we're going to Washington DC next week with CMAK, the California Marine Affairs and Navigation Conference, to do our usual politicking for Corps of Engineers funding and fishery management and other such things. I provide a fair amount of background in the staff report for council input and perusal. I'm not going to go through all the great details on it. Also for consideration tonight is resolution 07-18, which is in opposition to newer expanded offshore oil along our coast, which is a possibility under the new federal administration. From a fiscal standpoint, we're bringing five people this year. As you know, that was authorized by council a couple, three meetings ago. Mayor and harbor director will be funded by the Harbor Fund. City manager and councilman heading will be some kind of a split because they'll be splitting their time between CMAK-type duties and WRF duties. And then Rob, Public Works Director, is coming. He'll be completely coming out of the WRF fund. So we've applied for a cable committee grant for $10,900 to cover the Harbor Fund revenues, so our Harbor Fund expenses. Hopefully, that'll pencil out when it comes to it, once we add up who ends up doing what. As you know, we've been going to Washington DC for probably over 20 years now. We've been a member of CMAK forever. Going to Washington DC is pretty critical, the core funding and maintaining those relationships in DC to keep our harbor safely dredged. As you know, we get about $3 million a year and about $7 to $8 million every six to eight years, something we could never come up with on ourselves to do. So it's critical that we go there. Mor Bay is a quote-unquote subsistence harbor in the Corps of Engineers view, which puts us fairly low on the totem pole, but fortunately, because we've got a Coast Guard station and a few other factors and that we maintain these relationships in DC with our legislators and the Corps, we have been successful in getting funding every year. This year, as usual, with the CMAK group, dredging is our number one priority and core funding and OMB, Office of Management of the Budget and that process and how that goes from the local district through South Pacific Division to LA, to Washington DC headquarters to get that funding to make it come real. It's a pretty convoluted process, but it works because we all work together. Also on the list is fishery management issues. Observers in the trawl fishery, buyback on a refinance loan on the, on some trawl buybacks. There's some things we're bringing to NOAA Fishery's attention. The marine sanctuaries we're bringing as well, getting the status of the Chumash Sanctuary proposal that's still on the books. And to answer Mr. Echols' question, the concerns that we have with sanctuary governance is the Sanctuary Advisory Council really having no local control and the Sanctuary Advisory Council members are, really serve at the whim of the Sanctuary Superintendent. It's really another, what we deem a necessary regulatory layer over dredging oversight with plenty of layers already there. West Coast sanctuaries have not really fostered a very good working relationship with the commercial fishing industry and with working ports and harbors. And mission creep into fishery management. Monterey Bay Sanctuary in particular was established with the promise that it would never get into fishery management, although it's tried over the years. So those are just some of the things that historically the city of Mor Bay has been concerned with in sanctuary governance, so I wanted to answer that. The question that he also, that Mr. Echols had about the WRF, which is where we're bringing the extra folks to DC this year, the desalinization being in the title, that was a cut-and-paste error on my part. Desalinization was a topic last year that we brought and when I wrote the staff report up this year, I didn't cut out desalinization. So that's where that came from. We've also got meetings set up with Bohm, the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, to go over the Trident Winds proposal and also to bring our concerns about offshore oil because they are a definite part of that process and the leasing process. Going to bring our support to the US Coast Guard for their project and to our legislators as well to show that we've got support for that project and explain why we're having some difficulty financially moving forward with that. And then again, we'll be, again, meeting with all of our legislators. Attached to the staff report is last year's agenda that we had with our lobbyist over in DC, the municipal code, dealing with the city's current prohibition on offshore oil serving facilities in Mor Bay, some draft leave-behind letters that we leave with our legislators and the Corps of Engineers and some CMAK talking points. To date, we've got set up meetings with National Marine Sanctuaries, Corps of Engineers, South Pacific Division, Senators Feinstein and Harris's office, Congressman Carver Hall's office, Walter Crookshank, the acting director of Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, Kimber Colton, who's a legislative counsel for Representative Pingree, who authored that working waterfront bill that we made a resolution to support up in Maine, EPA on the WRF side, EPA to talk about WIFIA and funding matters, USDA Office of Rural Development on the Ferguson Group side, the folks that they're setting up the meetings with, again Feinstein and Carver Hall, and then also trying to set up some meetings with Majority Leader Kevin McCarthy and others. So pretty full agenda. We'll be doing most of those meetings on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, doing the rounds with CMAK, and then Thursday, doing some other rounds with just City Mor Bay and other meetings we can set up. So with that, it's our meeting list so far. Happy to answer any other questions and if you have any concerns, I'm glad to answer those as well.
Great, Eric. I just, I was just going to talk a little bit about the resolution. Just, so I think we had some public comments last meeting and they submitted some documents that draft, template documents that have been utilized. And I had, there had been some outreach from just different folks that asked whether or not I'd be interested in bringing this forward. Not necessarily me, of course, but it landed on my email. And Dana, thanks for providing, and Scott actually providing our, the information on the Measure C and the municipal code, which is really quite an interesting story. So that's what comprises this resolution. And it basically, it tells the story of what's important to Mor Bay. Measure C that was passed by the vote of people in 1986, ordinance 297 that is in place as a result of Measure C, a passed resolution that the city adopted to oppose seismic testing that was being proposed by PG&E and went on to identify our Mor Bay Commercial Fishing Organization that stands opposed to offshore oil, any new offshore oil development. And then it just identified some of the history of failures and disasters in different coasts in California, the Gulf Coast, and what an oil disaster could do. And then it goes on to reference, and I guess I could read the whole thing publicly for people, but I'm just telling this part of the story for council and the viewing audience and goes on to talk about December 2016, President Obama signing an executive order to oppose or ban offshore oil drilling. And then April of 2017, President Trump issuing an executive or calling, implementing a America First offshore energy strategy to open it up. And then it identifies currently our governor and state senate, state lands commission, cities including Los Angeles and San Francisco have called for no new federal offshore leases in the Pacific Ocean. And then there is now therefore be a result that we oppose the offshore drilling expansion and we endorse a responsible renewable energy platform development. And I, you know, that was just a summarized version of that for council. And just as an ex parte, Congressman Carver Hall held a rally at the courthouse steps in San Luis Obispo, invited myself, Mayor Harmon, JP Webb, the Chair of the Sanctuary Advisory Council, Supervisor Gibson, to basically, you know, tell the story of what's important to California on opposing offshore drilling. So not to get ahead of ourselves. I did voice my concerns in opposition of offshore drilling, not necessarily representing this as, as an approved document, but telling the story as one of us. And so that's, this resolution did frame much of my comments, considering when you look at the history of what's happened in offshore drilling and some of the things that have impacted us. But it also recognizes that we still rely on oil. But at any rate, those are my comments there. And now open it up for discuss, for questions. And I don't have any speaker slips, so I'll, I'll open it up for, for public comment. Anybody for public comment? None? I'll close public comment and bring it back for council and look to Red for questions, comments, discussion.
Okay, so you want questions, comments, and discussions all at once?
Sure, sure. We're right at the end of the night here.
Yeah, okay. I think, I think we're sending a great delegation. We have a great agenda. Everything that Eric covered in there are things that I want to see addressed. We have a resolution that speaks my heart, that we don't want offshore drilling, exploration, or seismic. We do need to make a note that the resolution that was presented in the original agenda packet has been amended with some minor changes strictly, nothing that changes the sense of the document, just some grammar cleanups. So I am in favor of approving the CMAK agenda and the resolution.
Okay, great, Red. Thank you. Matt?
I don't have any questions. The only comment I would make, I also agree with Red in terms of the CMAK delegation. You guys go get it done. I would tell you to have fun, but the agenda looks really full and I think you'll have fun on the, on the, on the flight home. The one thing I'd like to discuss or make commentary about is this resolution and to speak of the singular beauty of it and when we talk about one cohesive Mor Bay with all the various party members that are interested and behind this document from every, from all the various political angles of our little city. And that's not to speak not just of California and globally in terms of climate change and it being against oil drilling, but I like the way that the entire city of Mor Bay seemingly is, is mentioned here and that kind of denotes us as a community. And with that, that's it.
Cool, Matt. John?
And thanks for that, Red. And Matt, I absolutely agree with you. I'm glad to be part of the delegation. It's a packed agenda. I want to thank Eric for all the work that, once again, you've done in spearheading this and getting us hooked up with everybody and moving things forward and getting us talking points and all the information hopefully we're going to need to do what we need to do in, in Washington DC. I am supportive of the resolution. I appreciate Matt's comments and absolutely agree with that. I'll, I'm saying that again on purpose because I think it's important and that's it.
Thanks, John. Marlos?
The only question that I had, you answered, which was if you've already scheduled meetings and you have, and I was pleased to hear that. And I agree with everything that's been said so far. I'm glad we're going. I'm glad and I'm anxious to hear what you're going to come back and tell us you've learned. And I know you will do that. And I'm sorry that it's going to be cold and rainy in Washington while you're there, but I can't help that.
Just like home.
I fully support the resolution, totally, and agree with everything that's been said about it.
Okay, thanks, Marlos. Thanks again, Eric, for everything. I just have one more question for council on the resolution. We did receive a draft resolution from state lands and I guess the other ask about the resolution is to just draft a letter and submit this resolution to Bohm before the March deadline. It's one thing to draft the resolution, but we want to have this resolution as our, submitted as our comments. So I think we need to tie the knot there. Okay, good. The letter just needs to, nothing fancy, just needs to say, hey, this is submitted on behalf of the city and here's the resolution. I think we could probably do that and I can sign that and get it off. Just need a concurrence on that. Okay, good. I didn't really think about that until just earlier today. So other than that, I think we're ready to go. Eric and staff tonight, thanks for everything. Anything else? Do we need to next necessarily make a motion on this? We make motion approval of the resolution.
Yeah.
Yep. As amended.
As amended.
You need it, Red, or just need? I move approval as amended of resolution number 07-18, a resolution of the city, council of the city of Mor Bay, California, opposing new or expansion of existing offshore oil and gas leases off the coast of San Luis Obispo County and supporting measures to prohibit discharge of pollutants into the ocean.
Second. We have a motion and a second by Red. A motion by John, second by Red. Okay. With that, any further discussion? See, none? All in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. Anything else? And we're, we're good to go. We've got consensus on the, the agenda, so we're good to go on that. That would conclude item C3. And then we move on to future gen items. Any future gen items for anybody? We just, we just set all these goals and everything, so yeah, let's go.
I know with saying that, I hate to even bring it up since, but it's not a goal. Actually, I think it can be fitted into there. But anyway, yes, I would like to bring up for future council consideration, the placement and issuing of, or completion of fire pits at the Rock parking lot. In the last, I think, year, year and a half, the parking lot was improved, parking, et cetera, one fire pit was placed. We do have, we already have the fire pits and I would like to bring it up for council consideration at a future date to have those fire pits placed.
Replaced or removed?
No, new ones placed.
New ones placed.
We have them. That was part of the idea to improve the Rock parking lot. We did put one pit, fire pit on the east side of the parking lot. And I do believe the idea, correct me, Rob, if I'm wrong, was three or four fire pits along the front there. And we do have the existing materials to do those fire pits. It's just a matter of...
I'd support the discussion for the agenda item, but I'm not, like, not sure I'd support the fire pit, but I think we had some other discussions on that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, no problem. Then it would be wonderful to have the discussion.
We have to have the discussion. Now, that's all good. Red? Do we have unanimous support on that? Future gen item? Okay. I think we were supposed to, I thought that was, that was supposed to come back to us as an update anyway.
So I have one, another one. This is from an email I think we all got regarding the completion or beginning and completion of the Jack Lalanne Memorial Fitness Apparatei, apparatus at, near the Rock. And so I'd just like to agendize that. I know there may be some issues with regard to coastal or what have you and other, other things. And I'll leave it at that. Everybody should have seen the email, I hope.
Okay, so I think, yes, sir?
I'd like to see if we can add something to that item because this is a recreation division issue. Gone through the advisory committee and Kirk had been looking from direction for me about how to proceed. And there's also interest in doing a bocce court and greenhouse by the, by...
955 Shasta, the temporary park area that's on the corner of Shasta.
The Pocket Park.
Right. The Pocket Park, the off-leash cat park, whatever you...
So similar, very similar to the Lalein where there's an... So similar, very similar to the LaLanne where there's an outside group willing to fund it. We just need council to look into, you know, just understand what some of the considerations are before staff move forward. So if it makes sense to put those together?
I would amend my request and include that per request of our city manager, if that would be appropriate for everybody to agree to, that'd be fine.
Agreed.
Okay, absolutely. So we have concurrence on fire pit and the Jack Lanne Fitness and the advisory board recommendation for bocce ball and the utilize it, utilization of the pocket park.
I looked at both of those.
Okay, all right. Okay. All right, good. Anything else? And with that, our next city council meeting will be Tuesday, March 13, 2018, at 6:00 PM, right here at 209 Surf Street at the Vets Hall. Thanks very much. Meeting adjourned.